Maybe I missed a camera. There we go, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this 6:30 meeting for MDE to order. We have some guest speakers with us this evening, as well as an opportunity for public comment. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Rochelle, who is with MDE.
I'm Rochelle Hanson from MDE. All right, sorry. I'm Rochelle Hanson from MDE's voluntary cleanup program. And today's meeting is on the Proposed Response Action Plan, a cleanup plan for the Mount Airy Rails-to-Trails. And we're going to start, so MDE does the facilitating of the meeting. I'm going to tell you who I am, and then I'm going to hand it over to Eric Schubert. He's going to give a presentation on what the proposed plan is. And then, at the end, we'll take questions and comments. And so I'm going to hand it over to Eric.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Eric with ECS, consulting for this project for the Rails-to-Trails, Mount Airy. I could for next slide. Just some quick background with the proposed trail. I think a lot of folks know where it's going to be. But as you can see in the figure on the screen, that's the proposed layout for the Rails-to-Trails, recreational path. And you can go ahead to the next slide. And just background with the site, it, of course, was a former railroad easement. It dates back to 1831. And it was rerouted around the loop in 1839. Operated as a passenger service until 1957, and then a freight service until the 1970s. CSX then operated this section of the railroad, and it was abandoned around 2006. Since then, there's been several environmental studies on the project. Really, a lot of this stems back all the way to 2012. There were some initial talks of doing this project. February 2013, CSX did grant permission to perform environmental investigation or study at the site. And 2014 was the initial study. That included 15 surface soil grab samples. And that's literally just grabbing a handful of soil from the railroad ballast. The lab results did have concentrations of arsenic and benzoyl pyrene, which is a fuel component that was detected above the cleanup standards. So additional study was done after that. And we had, in 2016, there was another consultant that came in, collected additional soil samples. And that was just for almost quality control, where it was sent to entirely different lab, collected by a different consultant. Similar results, exceedances of both arsenic and the select PAHs, which is that same benzoyl pyrene compound mentioned before. So from there, we had some initial results, and there was talk of what was going to be done. One of the first things that was discussed was capping it, because it would fit well with the proposed use. We're going to have a recreational path, we're always intending to be paved. And that would also serve as something that would cover up the contaminants of concern. So we kind of drafted a capping plan. And that was more for budgetary purposes at this point. MDE's still not involved. Until a couple months later, and then in July of 2019, the site applied to the MBE's VCE program. And in September, they were accepted. And the voluntary cleanup program is just that. It's a voluntary program to get some guidance from the state, get some feedback from the state. It involves a public comment period for full transparency. And it's, the whole purpose of it is to remediate the site into a future use that is proposed. Brings us to November of 2020, and a purchase agreement was signed for Mount Airy. So after that, now that we're enrolled in the VCP, we're going to do some more types of studies that are targeted toward what the VCP likes to see. And we're really going to characterize the site at this point, and see exactly what we're dealing with. Up on the screen, you'll see OU sampling, that's Operational Unit. We just break this down into manageable sections. So we broke it down into six different sections. And I will have a figure in the coming slides that will kind of outline this just a little bit better. But in those six sections, we'll take what's called composite samples, usually 10 grab samples, and you mix it into one sample. And that is used to kind of give you an idea of what you're seeing at that depth. So we did 0 to 6 inches and 6 to 24 inches, to kind of give us a characterization of what we might find in these different segments or these different operational units. Arsenic was detected in each of these 96 composite soil samples. And so you know arsenic is naturally occurring in soil typically. You know, we use a bioavailability standard of around 10. In Washington County, I think the background concentration is 11. Carroll County might be a little lower, and Frederick County also. But 10 is usually what we're using. For this, for a recreational path, we can use a standard of 20 parts per million. So that's just kind of a comparison of what we're getting. From this study, we had ranges from 4.31 parts per million to 392 parts per million. And again, there'll be a figure here to follow this, will kind of show where we found it and what we got. Arsenic concentrations in 87 of these soil samples did exceed the medium frequency use for recreational areas. And again, that standard's 20. We had benzoyl pyrene again, which is our fuel component. And it was at concentrations exceeding the residential cleanup standard in one of those composite soil samples. So with this information, we drafted a response action plan. And that's something that we do. It basically outlines different things of what we found and what we plan to do about it as a remedial effort based on the proposed use. So it's a big document, it has a lot of the data, presents it to the state, the state comments on it. And this is kind of part of that, where it's a public participation period of a response action plan. So based on the findings from that June 2021 report, we wanted to determine more laterally what's going on in the easement. So we're expanding from the first round, and we're delineating out further. And this one included 48 composite samples. And arsenic concentrations detected in 34 of these 48 composite samples exceeded that Tier 4 standard that we're using as a background reference. So because we had exceedances in that round two, we're going to expand out even further, closer to the property lines, and see what we have there. So in May 2022, we did a round three. And this study evaluated concentrations of arsenic all the way up to the property lines. And this event included the collection of 28 composite soil samples and 10 grab samples. We had concentrations of arsenic exceeding Tier 4 standards in three of the six operational We'll rewind there on the timeline, but in September 2021, there was settlement on the And we updated the draft response action plan in June 2022. So what's in the response action plan? The contaminants of concern identified on site, as previously mentioned, arsenic and benzoyl pyrene. The proposed remedial action at this time is asphalt cap for the path. The path is proposed to be a 12-foot-wide pathway, and that's going to be an 8-inch-thick cap. And I don't know if, I'm sure a lot of us have been on Rails-to-Trails recreational paths. It's usually just an asphalt path right down where the railroad used to be, real popular for bikers and joggers and everything like that. Outside of that 12-foot asphalt cap, there's proposed for soil and landscape caps. So here, we would cover the ballast that's existing, 24 inches of clean fill material, approved by the MDE. And then underneath that would be a marker fabric, just to kind of delineate the interface between whatever's left in place before we start putting clean fill on top of it. There is, you know, a proposed stone cap for some steeper slopes, where it just wouldn't be feasible to put in soil elsewhere. And right now, proposed is 8 inches of gabion stone, riprap, or similar material. And again, that would be underlaid by a geotextile marker fabric. And the caps come with a cap maintenance plan, where they're inspected yearly for cracks or breaks or anything like that that may render the cap, the cap's integrity no longer there. Next slide. So the public comment period does end July 18th. And I'll come back to this slide here for the contact information, but if you want to move ahead to the figures. So there, it's kind of zoomed in for you, but if you look at it, it kind of shows the different kind of caps that are currently proposed along the easement. For that 12-inch recreational path, that's your asphalt cap, that's kind of your orange area. Then you have a soil cap in other areas where grade permits, and that's kind of that greenish area. And then the blue, right now, is where we have proposed stone cap for steeper slopes. I think this next slide will break down a little more of how those operational units work. So you can see there, they're just originally broken down into segments. And there's little dots, if you can zoom in along the meeting, or the easement there. Those are grab samples that would be pulled together to make up those kind of composite samples. I'll go ahead and forward it one more. So those are kind of the results that we had. Looking at that, green is 0 to 20 parts per million, and this is for just a surface ballast from 0 to 6 inches. Right along the, so this is a plan view. So if you're a bird flying over top of this, this is the way, looking down on the railroad easement. So your railroad track center line's going to be dead center there, indicated by that dotted line. So you can kind of see some of the higher concentrations are associated with the, toward the middle. And that's your dark red, like, I'm sorry, actually, the purple is the darkest or the highest concentrations of arsenic. And then it goes down to your red, orange, pink, and then the green was the 0 to 20 parts per million. So in addition to the 0 to 6 inches, the top, we also collected deeper composite samples to see vertically how far the arsenic concentrations extended. So here, you can see that, you know, we have a lot more green toward the borders. And overall, the concentrations of arsenic did go down, which is often what you expect with arsenic. Tends to bind with organic layer. And we find it more in surface soils than deeper soils. But we still do have exceedances there, and you can see those in the purples and the darker reds. And again, 0 to 20 is that green. And 20 is kind of our cutoff level there of, or action level. So here is something, a cross-section of what a proposed cap might look like. You can see there where your cap section is asphalt on the top. There might be a stone subbase underneath that, and then a geotextile marker fabric. It's a pretty typical asphalt pavement section that you might find for parking lots or anything similar to that. Then there's also a soil cap. And that's denoting that, you know, 24 inches of clean soil, underlaid by a geotextile marker fabric, and then the existing fill material. And again, proposed for some of the steeper slopes at this time, 6 inch to 8 inches of stone, gabion baskets or the like, depending on slope conditions and what's feasible there based on that. And all of these actions are intended to block the exposure pathway of, you know, coming into contact with high concentrations of, you know, arsenic-impacted soils. I believe that was our last slide. There we go. If you want to rewind back to the contact there for Rochelle.
Well, I'll tell you what, go back to the actual.
Yeah, please jump in.
There you go. Go back to the figure. So just a couple of quick points of reference for those who may not be quite aware. So my name is Mark Mack. I'm a toxicologist for the Department of the Environment. And just to put a little bit of background into this, the reason we're out there initially is these guys, CSX, with the town, did some characterization to figure out, hey, is there anything present? So the reason we're here is, historically, different entities, whether it be farmers in certain applications, or in this instance, a railroad, may, somewhat speculative on my part, not a conclusive statement, but you go down, you don't want trees impeding or brush growing in a railroad right away. So like a boom on a sprayer in the tractor, you know, I live in Caroline County, you run down the track with a boom, you kill the brush along the side so that you don't have some sort of railroad accident in 1928, or whatever would be the case. So the reason this chemical is here, it's a fairly stable chemical. Arsenical pesticides and herbicides, historically, were quite effective to knock down certain, you know, brush and different things like that. Also, they're used as insecticides. It doesn't move very far, it's not particularly mobile, it is isolated to the upper layer, simply because that's where it was sprayed, wasn't incorporated in. You send that down, they may or may not have sprayed every so many years to control that brush. So that's why you would have that. The elevation also, you all may live in the neighborhood, for those of you in the town, obviously, you know that area fairly well. You may have some variable distribution dependent upon the elevations, the slope, all those things like that. So the reason the department is involved is, they submitted an application, the town would like to improve this property and open the Rails-to-Trails. We required a remedial action plan for them to address the arsenic that's present. As you can see in your, go to your, I'll call it rectangular boxes, it will move out and decrease laterally, simply because of how the application occurs. So there are other activities that the department required to make sure, if it went beyond the extent that you see here, we're looking at those for certain properties and are proceeding accordingly. But generally, the highest concentration is where you would expect, down the center line, simply because that's where the equipment is running. So Rochelle, did you have anything to add to that?
I think you've summarized it.
No, and I appreciate you catching up on that. I did gloss over the, you know, possible source for that, for sure.
The one other element that I would say, it wasn't torturously clear to me, but it may have been, so this will occur in incremental manner. We are reviewing the documents now, we have yet to comment on those. They have to present it to the public. We take the public's comments into consideration. Our goal is to ensure that public health is protected. This is a common remedy, and is something that I would expect, looking at many remedies over many years similar to this. They may move incrementally due to a host of different constraints. It could be fiscal, it could be timing, it could be permitting, all those things. All other permits still apply. So just because you had an environmental problem, you just can't plow down the street and throw sediment all over creation. So all of those permits that any, I believe you're the town engineer, same permitting process, same construction plans, sediment erosion control, whatever would be necessary to ensure it's done, not only correct from an environmental perspective, but also from an engineering perspective. All that transpires independent and in conjunction with what we do. Did you have anything to add to that?
No, that's also a good point, and the proposed rap is always include dust control methods and similar things for when it does get implemented, you know, which pathway gets chosen, that is always a consideration that's taken.
Do you want to open up to questions?
Sure.
Hello, David Mascherano, I live at 213 Sunset Avenue, one of the properties that abuts against this Rails-to-Trails project. I do have a question, it's actually not for the engineers, but for the town council. And I'm not sure how many of you were present in 2006, when CSX actually abandoned the rail line, but I know, you were, okay, thank you.
I was in view, but I answered the question.
Okay. Thank you. I'm curious as to what notification was given to the residents of, abut against that property, based on the legislation that was written at the time of creating that rail line in the 1800s? That land should have actually been repossessed by the closest landowners, as far as it goes to the midpoint of that rail line, and as wide as our property is. And I'm curious if any notification was given to those individuals? And if so, you know, how was that done? Is it in the records at all? Thank you.
If you guys have an answer.
I don't, I was just going to, none of us were really sitting on the council at that, at that point. Do you happen to have a legislation number that we could reference?
Yeah, let me, let me pull that up, I'll get that for you.
That's fine.
Thank you.
And then, obviously, we'll have to do some research into that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm going to tell you, one of the first people I'm going to tap into is former councilman Billy Wagner, because before the houses at the end of Sunset were built, that was Wagner's property going up against the rail line, so.
Because I'm going to sneak in, though, we got to stay focused on the proposed rap, not, I know that's not how you guys usually do your meetings, but in this one, we're, so it's a good question for them, but it's not this subject of this meeting.
I have some comments on this.
You have to come up.
My property adjoins a lot of that track. I grew up on that railroad track. It was part of my playground. In our deed, it specifies that our property goes to the center of the old main line. Mount Airy was double-tracked. The main line was on the west side. Now, Peter Halt, when he was involved with the town council, went up to Frederick, and he said, Ron, said, I checked all the deeds. The BNO had bought the property outright. Wasn't given to him as land grad, or wasn't taken away from people. People sold parcels of property to the BNO to make that out. Now, I haven't done anything with it. It hasn't bothered me. I'm thankful that the railroad owned it, and it's now your property, if that old covert ever closes up. It's not my problem. But I think it needs to be thoroughly checked out. So I say it's not, it's not a big deal to me with a tree farm there. Hey, I want you guys to get this rail trail done, because I want to use it before I die. So, and I have another comment for you environmentalists. Okay, arsenic is a poison. What's the real issue? We going to eat the dirt? We going to make mud pies? Get dirty? We could wash arsenic off. I don't see, having been on the water sewer commission, I haven't seen any problem with these toxins leaching into our water. That track's been there for 180 years.
So I, and I'll speak very briefly to this, but to your point, everything is toxic in doses. So it's highly dependent upon what you do, how long you do it, and all those things. So something like this, you can have more, which is the case, than if it was right in your backyard or right in your vegetable garden. So as a regulatory agency, not necessarily an environmentalist, but our environmental regulatory agency, we work of a certain set of standards and protocols to be protective of those that are perhaps less tolerant than you and I may be. But what I would also tell you is, it is always wise to wash your fruits and vegetables and your hands, and you accidentally ingest dirt, even though you don't know it. So I pick a lot of sweet corn. And when I walk out of that sweet corn field and I blow my nose, it's black, because I'm dirty as can be. Or if I'm in the grain silo, I walk out of there, and I'm coughing, and I, when I, you know, when I, I got all kinds of dirt, because I'm getting all that dust. So it depends on what you're doing and all those things. So the guy cutting the Rails-to-Trails with the lawnmower is going to get a lot more than you or I who just use it. But at the end of the day, the plan will be protective of all of those uses, and they're going to take care of it. To what Rochelle said earlier, though, so that's a property title search equivalent, and I'm sure there were plenty of title searches done to get to the point of your purchase. So that would be the starting point on that, but we're not going to speak, we're here for how thick is thick enough, how clean is clean enough, all of those things, which was one of your questions. But the other becomes a property question in your title search when you transacted the property. And I'm sure those on both sides of that did their due diligence in that process. That clock is often reset historically over time, even though the records may indicate long ago it was X, now it's Y. Once you record that title at that point in time, hard to go back. And I see that all the time with farmers.
I simply wanted clarification on it, because it's a poison, and we've talked around it. And so how does it poison us? I wanted, I wanted clarification. Thank you.
Do you guys mind if I ask a question? Jason Poirier, council president for the town council. Over, so I get the capping, and then I get the soil remediation as you go out further. My question is about erosion and over time with the stone capping. So when you're putting the stone, in the diagram, it said 8 inches. Later, in the cut-through, it said 6 inches. So now we're saying 6 to 8. That stone is also then being put on the hillside. That's probably the best, the best method, right? Because you try to put soil, soil's just going to run off. Over time, though, erosion's going to take place. Is it our, the town, responsibility to monitor the erosion over the number of years? Or is it MDA coming through and saying, every five years, we're just going to walk the rail to trail and just monitor to make sure that the capping procedures that you guys actually laid out are still supporting and preventing the possibility of contamination with arsenic?
So it's a combination of both. Eric mentioned a cap maintenance plan, and so it's a cap operations inspection maintenance, and it will go with the deed, so you'll record it on the, in the land records, and it will include. include a whole specified inspection protocol for you to do. Usually, it's once a year. If it's something where we think there's a concern, if there's a large storm, it could say within 30, you know, within 30 days of a large storm for your questions about the steep slopes. But, so at the same time, you'll be doing something once a year. MDE also monitors periodically through inspections and a somewhat complicated system of if you were going to dig out there and you put in a missed utility ticket, I see all of them. It's actually personally, I currently the one who does it. And we check and make sure there's any controls that we have in place and advise people and make sure that it's repaired afterwards. So it is a combination. It's your, now, it is ultimately the property owner's responsibility to repair anything and maintain it.
So it is a lifetime liability, O and M, operation maintenance, no different than your roads or your streetlights. There's X number of years on the light bulb or the stoplight. When the stoplight burns out, you go out there, because you could get in an accident, and fix it. Or it's a windy whatever, and something occurs. So the town engineer has an O and M on many, many things. This would be one more associated with that. You could change that in the future, and then you would have to petition the department. We would look at a plan. So if you said, I'm going to build X there, absolutely, go do it. If you've got a great plan, you can do it, but you have to notify and do all of those things. But it's typical on properties like this. And many properties with a long history like a railroad would have these type of things associated with it.
So I'll ask, my, my follow-up is typically there are grants that are available for capping, the brownfield grant and those types of things does, are there grants just specifically related? Are you aware to the, the maintenance of a, of a project such as this? Or is it only a, we sort of just have the brownfield grant, and that's kind of it, since you guys are with MDE?
MDE doesn't have any. There could be some per EPA. I'm not personally aware of any, but they've got a long list of grants, and it may be something that comes up in the future also, as more brownfields last longer amounts of time. But not, to my knowledge, there's not currently a grant focused specifically on the maintenance.
Thank you for your time.
What I would tell you with regard to a question like that is, any park open space, this or otherwise, the Department of Natural Resources in the state of Maryland will go through cycles. I can tell you, right now, there was a big push for certain rural jurisdictions and certain areas to get funds for, it could be O and M. Depends how sophisticated you could be to apply to those. But they come up periodically on the legislate, legislative, you know, bills. I just saw one that came through for a whole bunch of different things. If you applied correctly, it would be competitive, obviously, but you, you could explore things like that. We don't have any process in that. We would obviously, if petition could write letters of support periodically to assist parties involved in things like that. And there are a lot of factors that go into that. Location, you know, do you have a lot of parks in the area, all those things. But DNR is, is the place to go, probably even more so than EPA, once the remedy is in place. They'd like to turn over the O and M to, to the jurisdiction.
The citizens go first.
This may be redundant, but how's the aquifer in our town protected? And is it measured in our aquifer? Wells? Town wells, individual wells? Individual wells? Yes. Individual wells are, you know, it depends on how deep your well, what the fracture is. It's complicated geology here. But the chemical you have present here is less transmissible and mobile than other things, like you've all heard of MTBA and some of the gas, gasoline, water soluble things. Anybody with a well should be, be periodically doing maintenance on their well, just because, you know, you don't know, as a boat owner, if I accidentally get a leak in the gas line in December and didn't pay attention and lost 10 gallons of gas, those type of chemicals typically impacted more. We would not expect to see anything associated with this that would impact your aquifer. The town supply wells are monitored on a routine basis. Individual homeowners, I would always recommend to use carbon as you can, maintain your well, flush out your system, and test periodically. And that's, that's not specific to this. That's just well owners, and I say that all the time.
So these two chemicals, arsenic and the benzoyate, or the benzene types?
Benzoyate.
Benzoyate, they, they don't typically matriculate down below.
They do not have the ability to move nearly as quickly or as far because of their chemical structure, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
And I would also tell you, if you sampled your well and arsenic was there, you probably have a deeper well, it's probably in fractured rock, and it is naturally occurring. So you will periodically get arsenic in wells, independent of this process, especially in certain geologic formations.
Thank you.
Good evening. Stephen Demoter, I'm a town council member here. Two questions. One, for the, for the samples that contained the highest amounts of arsenic, the operable units, and which abutted property, how many of those were there? In other words, what percentage of, of the samples that abutted to the personal property lines had high concentrations at the edge? And did you offer to collect samples further out onto the personal property to see if it actually extended onto their personal property?
So theoretically, we have a plan that has been executed, and for all of them, independent of whether it was high or low. It would be speculative, but I like to speculate, because I look at a lot of data, and, you know, that's what I do. So something like OU6 with that bright purple, it's like, what in the world? Well, is that close to town? Mark was running the train that ran the stuff. I stopped at the town intersection, and I filled it up right there. Or you're in town, they're grading, and they could have pushed dirt at some point along that edge where you've got that high value. We have gone, we, not we, the state requested other parties to go out and characterize. That data is forthcoming, and we will work with the property owners as well as CSX, who is doing that work. And we have been in contact with most of those entities. A lot of it is very low.
But that's, that wasn't really my question. My question is, if, if I look at a map of the trail and where you had high concentrations, and where the personal, okay, where is there actual, like, people's homes? Do people's homes abut up against a high concentration area?
So many of them are lower, but we went into all of those yards and sampled regardless of what that result was.
Okay.
And now have data in their yards to make the determination if any of that chemical, so it's, it's like a mountain.
Uh huh.
Highest in the middle dissipates on the side in general terms. So as you move further from that center line, the data demonstrates that it decreases. A lot of the data that we've seen up to this point is well below what we would like it to be on those residential properties, which is a good thing, and that data will be forthcoming once it undergoes sufficient.
So you did sample onto, onto people's property?
Every property.
Okay.
State did not do that. The state requested, they, they were very amenable and agreeable to that process and are, I think, basically complete. Is that accurate?
Yes, they're complete. I, the last email that we had, the last communication was, they are going to be out next week communicating results directly to the homeowners.
Okay.
So in person. So they'll knock on your door or call you.
Another question. You described the, the capping plan based on standards for quote unquote, a medium, medium frequency use, tier four. What is a tier four compared to a tier one, two, three, eight? Is that certain exposure assumptions about how length of time people are going to be physically in contact, how many hours a day, a week?
Exactly.
And so describe what a level tier four is, so I can understand the assumptions you were using.
Yeah, that is a moderate frequency use, 182 days a year. You're out there doing all your things. We keep the consumption rate, even though you're not really eating the dirt, you're just doing your thing. And you get some in you, just because that's what happens. Children get more than you and I, at least theoretically. Certain activities get more than other activities. So we assume you get your full body dose, even though you're only out there four hours for your entire ingestion of soil, as if you were out there all day. So it is a rather conservative.
Okay.
Value. You're out there, we have a whole bunch of different tiers.
Okay.
As we understood. This is what most parks would be.
Okay. Quick, another quick question. So you're using conservatively, conservatively derived screening values essentially. Do you have one overall generic receptor, or do you look at exposure pathways for children and then versus adults?
All.
Okay. So you look at each individually?
Each population individually, and as you kind of, I think you have set me up in the fact that, which do you pick? You pick those that are most conservative.
Okay.
So the probability of a child that was two years old being out there for 182 days in the winter and all those.
Gotcha.
But that's, that's the one that drives what you pick. And I, you and I, if it was a over 50, assuming you're over 50.
Be careful with that, making judgments.
So we could ingest a whole lot more than a young child, just because of our physical habits. But good question.
Last, just, just help answer the question. It, it is true, though, that for this particular contaminant, the chemical form of it and the pH of the material, and the pH of the soil, the pH of the water, there are factors that could impact the future mobility of the contaminant. Is that not correct?
I would agree, correct.
Okay.
It would be less so than many other contaminants, but absolutely, if you were to line it or the reverse, those things can all influence that. That is highly variable from depth. Given the mass that exists in this location and the discrete layer, that's why landfills are a bigger problem, because you've got a giant mass all stuck in a very specific, but anything can move to a degree under the right conditions. That is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
I just have some follow-up questions in Galetti Town Council. Hi. So Barney, what I'm looking at on what Councilman Member Demoter said, where it says property line, the OU6450, that would be at the end by the cold storage.
That's correct. That's Hill Street, basically.
Okay. So then as you move along, so can you go back a slide, Barney? I think it was one more back. Uh, no, keep going. Okay. So looking at this legend, if we look, the areas where you have no cap proposed on the bottom, it looks like the only one, so I'm guessing there were no contaminants in that area right above you? Right above where you're sitting, sir?
This area you're talking about?
Above it, where it's that color of the no cap, above the red, up there, yes.
That's right.
Yes, if we go back to the other.
So now let's go back to the other one, because I'm.
So if you see OU2, there's two sets, there's a 16.5 and a 10.9.
Okay, that's that area on the map.
Yes, and well, and the 10 point, the last round of samples, oh, sorry. The last round of samples on there is at the property boundary. So there's a much bigger difference.
Right.
All the rest are a certain distance from the center line, but that last group is along the property boundary.
And then, go ahead.
This map is, doesn't do justice to.
I know, it would almost, I'd like to see the outline on top of that.
That would, that would be beneficial.
Yeah.
Visually see that. This is what I would call a.
An overhead picture of what we're looking at, but.
Very distinct square boxes, there indeed is not the case. So if you overlay that with the real data, it, there would be.
That would help.
Yeah. And what we would require is kind of what I would take your question to the next step is, you got to have a clean, or else you're capping. So if it's not clean, you're putting something on it. If you want to not put something on it, you being the town, then you have to demonstrate clean.
And then, my last question, so the center line, the dot, dot, dot's the center, it looks like we're capping out 12 inches, right? We're doing asphalt 12 inches from center?
Correct.
Twelve, I'm sorry, 12 feet.
12 feet, right.
12 feet. So we're going to go six feet from each side of the dotted, so are you, you were saying this is typical of what you've seen as far as remediation and capping, and we all want to be healthy, obviously, that's our concern. So is this typically what you see, the 12 feet from center out to cover?
I'm wondering, that's typically where the light goes, that's going to be more of what I would call a impermeable surface that you're not.
You're not going to typically ride off of.
Well, if you rode off of it.
Bless your me.
But you're not going to dig through it.
Right.
I couldn't dig through it unless I, not to make trouble from the town, because I'm out there sort of off the whole thing. He's going to have to destroy your public property.
Right.
Caps like this are typical for, that's typical for imperfect surface, we usually require six inches with some sort of substance.
So 12 feet is your typical?
It's not unusual.
Okay.
You can make it 20, 30 if you wanted to.
No.
But.
Right.
But then they've got to stand out with a urban cap, which is obviously bigger with this. And then they have a buffer, or a, to demarcate.
Okay, thank you.
As a resident in OU3, that is one of the only areas that does not have the, the green area on the outside of it. And so I know one of the things that was asked by one of my fellow residents is the grading of, of land outside of the actual rails, the trails, the 50-foot corridor, and how it, you know, how runoff from that area would settle within the property lines that are abutting against that property. And so I guess the question is, from an MDE perspective, is there any concern with that for those private residences? Or is that something that we have to take up with CSX to remediate?
Theoretically, and I don't, I mean, you would know whether your property's been sampled. I'm assuming your property has. So based upon the outcome of that, and I don't want to speculate, because I, whether I know what the number is, I don't know your address, I don't know you.
Understood.
Refrain from.
It was OU3.3 is where we are. Anyway.
So I, if it comes back and it's going to decrease radially, they'll characterize that a little further to say, did it go here, here, or here? And then the expectation is to do something there. The remedy that the town will implement, and whatever remedy may or may not occur on the properties, will all solve that issue that you're speaking to. So if something is there, theoretically, a remedy would occur to remove that and restore it back to grade. So let's say we dug up, somebody dug up six inches, put six inches back, off you go. The remedy they're proposing would stop further motion from that. Although, I would tell you, the probability is that whatever did or did not get on any of those adjacent properties probably occurred a little bit from erosion and a large amount from, you're going down there, it's windy on the left today, I get a swirl, there are trees in the way, there are not, all that buffers it.
Sure. And just, just to, to color this a little bit, I mean, at that bottom, you know, we live on the bottom of a hill, and we did have a, a garden there for years, where we were, you know, eating tomatoes and peppers and all sorts of things out of the land that was 20 feet from the edge of where you were measuring. So I just, you know, I just want to make sure that that context is applied to this as we're talking, because we had no clue that there was that level of, even though the studies were done in 2014, we didn't receive copies of that, or 2016, so.
And when your results come in, you, you have Rochelle's information.
Yes.
So feel free to reach back out if you had additional questions regarding things like that.
Understood.
And I will absolutely speak to you with regard to that. And I will tell you, these are lifetime incremental cancer risks, so we pick those numbers very conservatively. The uptake in plants is very low with regard to these particular types of. The uptake in plants is very low with regard to these particular types of chemicals. That doesn't alleviate your question or your concern, though, and I'm not trying
Yeah, we're not, yeah. It's an individual person basis, but yes.
Circle back, get your data, and then you hit us back.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Another, another question. So, so if I'm a property owner, you've taken some samples on my property, and I'm, I'm concerned about what you find. It's either at a high level or even a lower level. Is there a remedy for that property owner in terms of soil removal? What will happen if I'm a concerned property owner?
Yeah, that's what I, and I may not have spoken, at least I believe you did. So typically, if it came back, let's say the number was one and it came back two, do something. If it came, if the number is one and it came back .9, not do something. So when the data comes in, we have it, that discussion will occur, and we believe that they, that CSX or whoever takes, you know, responsibly will indeed take care of that. All you do is scoop it up. This is, the benefit of this particular instance is it isn't moving down like the gasoline and other things like that. So the remedy is, is pretty straightforward, and it's going to decrease as you move away.
Okay.
I can't speak specifically to the OU 6. You may move out a little further. Obviously, something transpired there that we're not absolutely certain why, but not unusual.
Okay.
So you talk about the levels changing, but so Oh, I'm sorry. Edward Garabedian, 107 Heritage Farm, Mount Airy. And we're at OU 5. And the last report that we read online said that was one of the few that had the 20 parts or around 20 parts, which was, you know, an orange flag. So obviously, we were concerned where, you know, okay, and they took soil samples on our property. So obviously, we have something there, because it was not green, it was orange. So is there any remediation? Or are we waiting, or we don't know?
So your property was sampled, I assume?
Yes.
Within the next?
Next week. They're going to personally deliver your results to you next week.
Okay. Okay.
And I always like to be a little loose on that. That's not a, you know, Tuesday afternoon, I'm serving you the subpoena at 4:00 PM, or the meeting is X. The expectation is within the next seven to 10 days, you will get those results. If it's above, then the expectation is something will transpire. You would dig it up, as, as we just said. And that would be a discrete, probably, area. They may have to get more data, because if I take it and it's still above where the department sets our standard, then you may have to move out five feet, and you may move out 10. Sometimes they'll move out a little further, just because I could sit there and, you know, pay you a penny at a time until I finally get to a dollar. Sometimes you move a little further and just scoop up the foot. But given where you're at, yeah, that data will be forthcoming, and you can reach back out to us.
Okay.
I, there are some that I believe may be more, and something may need to be done.
Okay, and I apologize if you've already covered it, but I thought it started at 7:30. Thank you.
Actually, so let me, does anyone have any more questions?
Quick question. So for those property owners where, let's say, you do some remediation, remove some soil, as part of the once-a-year monitoring or any kind of monitoring, would some of those personal property locations be monitored as well?
So if you told me I got a lot of money and I'm going to dig everything up, there is no O and M then. So on the property that the town owns, if you dug it all up, then there is none of that. It's only when there's a cap process. So typically, the expectation on private properties that are residential, unless you came to an agreement, you could cap it, and then there would be an O and M. In an instance like this, given the discrete location, there's no real benefit to doing those things. You would probably dig it up, and then there is no O and M associated with that.
Okay.
There are other instances, let's use, if we were right on Main Street here, and you had a UST heating oil tank in the middle of the basement floor, we don't want to compromise the building, and it's a residential building, been converted, you may have that maintenance requirement, simply because we don't want to jeopardize the structural integrity of what's going on. But in this instance, high probability that you'll dig it up, no O and M, and off you go.
All right, I'm just going to end by saying there is fact sheets on the round table by the door, my business card also, and a sign-in sheet. If you didn't sign in on your way out, I would love it if you sign in so that we know how many people came and document that we were all here.
Can we just put her information up?
Sure. Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and thank you guys for your time this evening. So if any other residents have any questions, please reach out to Rochelle. And as they already said, seven to 10 days, you'll be, if you're a property owner, you'll be getting your report. So thank you very much. It's 7:25. We'll go ahead and close this meeting. In about five minutes, we'll start our council meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, CMC. You with us tonight? Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. This is the Mount Airy Town Council Monthly Meeting for July 11th, and I'll call this meeting to order. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and Councilwoman Reed?
Yes, I just wanted to let the public know why I wasn't at the meeting. Neil and I went away over the Fourth of July weekend and brought back COVID with us. So we have been quarantined all week. We are feeling better, but not 100%. So we, I think we have a few more days of this. But that's why I'm not present, but I am here.
Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move into public comment. Can I just see by a show of hands how many residents would like to make public comment? That's fine. When you come up to the podium, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Dave Piyats. I'm on Five Park Avenue. I haven't been here in a while. I served for a total of 24 years on the council. I was three times the liaison and voting member of the Planning Commission. I was a professional engineer. I was consulted by the citizens for smart growth, which really didn't exist until April of this year. And when I saw the site plan with 700 houses being shown, I got, and I'm trying to think of the right word, fired up. And I spent a fair amount of time getting information and researching this. And I thought I had a handle on it. And last Thursday, I got a set of files of four, four meetings, I believe, between the developer and the town staff, you know. And I spent Friday night tossing and turning. I got pretty upset at times. Saturday, I reviewed these minutes, if you will. I'd like to say it's an ongoing effort, and it's going to take probably, I don't know, weeks, months before we get the full spectrum of what this means. I think the town, I mean, I sent you a three-page report with a lot of detail. It probably won't serve everybody to go through that word by word. I could read it, but I'd like to talk about my findings, if you will, very preliminary findings of the Beck situation, as I understand it. I know it's being reviewed for the new pre-concept plan. I'm somewhat familiar with the pre-concept plan and the concept plan, you know. The problem is, once it leaves the council's purview, it goes to the Planning Commission. And I'm not sure, to be honest with you, if they're really prepared to handle it. I'll get through some of my talking points. It has been known for over 20 years that it would be unprofitable to develop Beck property and extend Center Street, now known as Beck West. There were an effort by, led by Kelly Ziad, who was a planner for the town for probably seven or eight years, roughly. And she hired an architect to do a study of how the Beck property could be developed. Barney remembers that, I'm sure. And I can't remember the architect's name. The results came to the Planning Commission at that time, and it was such an uproar. And they said, "We can't do this." They wanted high-rise buildings, intense developments. And there was kind of a rebellion. The architect says, "If that's the way you feel, I'm out of here." And we tried to accommodate it. But the sense was that this just was not going to happen. The next effort was, after the master plan of 2013 and 14, was to develop mixed-use zoning. It was in the master plan at that time. It wasn't really called out, but it was inferred. The Planning Commission and the developer worked for several years. The same issues that arose with the, I call it the Kelly-Ziad study, for lack of a better term, is that it only works if you have high-rise buildings, 10 stories, whatever. And there was a lot of friction between the Planning Commission at that time. I used to talk to them, go to some of the meetings, and the developer, and they could never rectify it. So it sort of fizzled out, is the best word. And 2018, 19, it resurrected itself. I read the minutes of a meeting where Victor and Craig Kaz came to the town, and they said, "No, no, no, we have to continue this. We're going to do Beck West. You're going to have Center Street. You're going to have downtown zoning, you know, you name it. And this is all going to be good deal for the town." And it sounded really good. I read in the notes that Victor Kaz said, "This is $100 million project." I did a back-of-the-envelope, very, 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 very back-of-the-envelope, because there's so much uncertainty that it's going to take 250 to 300 million to do what's right, what the mixed-use concept would be as they understood it. So I think if you take 100 million and take 20 million off for purchasing the land, it's got to be at least 20 million for that. And then you have the well exploration. You're left with 75 million. You know, that's enough for maybe 200 townhouses or something like that, which is now Beck East. When I read through everything, it just seemed to me they were never, ever going to do any commercial development. They were not going to do downtown Mount Airy stuff. They weren't going to do anything, but they were promising it. And I think this is like a Ponzi scheme, maybe to get, I don't know why, to get developers. But this was reinforced at the June 2 workshop, joint between the council and the Planning Commission. And at the end of the meeting, when there was a lot of, I mean, people are going crazy. Everybody's upset about all this. They asked Craig Kaz, you know, what his summary. He says, basically, you can check the YouTube on the town website. That's where I got it. He basically said, "You're not going to get that. The market is deteriorating." The market was deteriorated 20 years ago. It was always, there was never a market there. But when you look at the minutes of what he said at these meetings, he was making all these promises. This store was coming, you know. But at the end of the day, on the June 2 meeting, he says, "I can't get anybody to come." But he was promising all these fancy stores and, you know, ones that we're familiar with. I have looked at MXD development a lot online, because I am an engineer. I'm not, I'm not the greatest engineer. Maybe Larry's not the greatest pilot, but, but what I'm saying is, I'm a, yeah. And I didn't mean it that way, Larry. What I'm saying is, I'm a competent, I'm a competent engineer. So, and I'm trying to be a little humorous, a little levity. MXD really works when you have the economic market for it. Otherwise, you're just, you're just wasting your time. And I wrote, even if William Shakespeare, Ben Franklin, and Tom Jefferson wrote the MXD zoning, if the economic market isn't there, it's not going to work. And I think that's where we are. I think the town has been taking down the garden path. I know I was, I've sent another email about the waiver. And I got a little upset with our town attorney, but I've reconsidered. I think, just like Larry, you know, I think Tom is a, is a good attorney. I've worked with him for, what, 10 years on the council. I think he was directed by the town administrator or the, you know. I mean, I'm reading the minutes. You were told to go develop Ordinance 202117. And another one on the Parks and Recreation 202116. I had the Department of Parks and Recreation for 16 years. I couldn't follow the logic whatsoever. Not that you didn't do, you know, I think you were trying to write this thing. It just didn't make sense.
Mr. Piyats, would you please wrap up?
What's that?
Would you please wrap up?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So I guess I got my point across. The MXD zoning, I believe, and this is just a belief, is just to get eight acre, eight.
Eighty-eight?
Yeah, eight, you know, to get high-density zoning. And what also concerns me is that nobody in the review chain, I'm talking about the planner, the, you know, the engineer. Tom was doing what he was tasked to do. But nobody could see this. And I think we have group think. And this is new, it's never been done before on this scale. And we have group think gone mad. And I think we need a new set of eyes in the Planning Commission. To be very frank, I think you need some new, fresh set of eyes looking at this. And I'm so ticked off that this gentleman, Mr. Gent, I just talked to, is so highly qualified in terms of integrity and working with things. And I'm really ticked off at you guys for not approving him. I think we need this kind of blood. So I guess that's my wrap-up.
Thank you. I misspoke. I said eighty-eight, and I meant eighty. I apologize. Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Kim Binack, and I reside at 1710 Trussell Street. I'd first like to thank all of the town council for serving, for town council. We know that this is not an easy job to take on, but we do. But it is your duty to uphold the codes of this town and the pulse of what your constituents wants for this town. I would first like to address the town council about the June 6 meeting, where three council members voted against Mary Hushour's nominations for Planning Commission. I am extremely disappointed, embarrassed, and ashamed of this town council in refusing to approve the mayor's appointees for Planning Commission. The mayor has nominated two very intelligent, well-qualified gentlemen to serve on this Planning Commission, for which he believes has the best interest of the town at heart. As I said, you are appointed, you are appointed to serve on the town council by your constituents and to represent what your taxpayers want. Please, stop pushing your personal agendas on what you think is best for Mount Airy. Stop letting your personal feelings interfere in what is right for Mount Airy. Stop letting, and start listening to your constituents and what we want for, and as a taxpayer, for this town. We do not want overdevelopment. We do not want overcrowding in our schools. We do not want traffic issues, and we do not want to be like Rockville. And we do not want our taxes, taxes to increase due to overdevelopment of our town. I am asking the town council tonight to approve and allow Mary Hushour, Mayor Hushour's nominations for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more hand over here. Good evening.
Hi, Sean Kelly, 306 Springgate Court. Hi, councilmembers. So I'm here to share a petition with you that has been e-signed by over 200 town residents. The petition reads, "We demand that the town council of Mount Airy confirm the appointments of Stephen O'Malley and Ralph Gent to the Planning Commission immediately. Further, we are appalled at the inaction of this council and the reasoning voice for stalling this confirmation. By not confirming Mr. O'Malley and Mr. Gent, you are risking error and missed opportunities for intelligent planning and smart growth in our town. Mayor Hushour was elected in part for his experience in town affairs and methodical decision-making. We expect you to confirm these qualified nominees immediately, as there are no logical reasons for stalling further." The list of signers, along with their comments, that include their addresses, neighborhood names, and urgings for you to do your duty tonight, has been sent to Ms. McLeary. And I understand she's forwarded to you also. It's past time to put the non-issue of how the Planning Commission opening came about and let the mayor do what he was elected to do. Now, all we need you to do is, is to do what we elected you to do. And please confirm the mayor's commission and board appointments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Those were the only three hands that I originally saw. Was there anyone else that wanted to address the council before we move on? Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right. We do not have any presentations, and we don't have any speakers. And I'm sure Mr. Mayor will talk about later some of our attendances for birthdays and so on and so forth. But we know that Mr. Pete Ballas, who is a resident of Mount Airy, today is his 80th birthday. And so I guess on behalf of myself and the town council, and I'm sure the mayor as well, we just wanted to wish you a happy birthday. I did stop by. Your truck wasn't there, so. All right. All right, next up, we'll go into the approval of the meeting minutes, as well as closed minutes. June 2022, town council meeting minutes. June 2022, closed meeting minutes in relation to Harrison LaCher property. The June 2022 closed meeting minutes in relation to salary adjustment for a staff member. And then June 2022 meeting hearing minutes related to the Charter Amendment 2021-2, finance, budgeting, and purchasing. I will make a motion that we approve those minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Council President, I have a, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
And a suggestion. So when I was at the Maryland Municipal League Conference back last month, I attended a workshop session called Hot Button Legal Issues. And one of the topics was how to deal with public meetings, how to deal with people who were disrespectful and using profane language and that kind of thing. But as part of the session, what I learned was, there's a new requirement, and we'll have to run this down. But the requirement is that requesting speakers for their full address is not allowed. They said, "When people come up and give public comments, you can ask for their neighborhoods, but you really shouldn't be asking for their specific street addresses." And I think it gets to like privacy issues and things like that. So my point is, I'm going to suggest that our town government look into this. I have the contact of the person who gave the presentation at MML. But based on what I heard, and I think I heard it clearly, I would like to amend these meeting minutes under Section 3 Public Comments to leave the people's names, but take their addresses off. And that is my proposed amendment. So it's something we need to look into. I don't have the, you know, the causal document in front of me, but that's the guidance that they gave everyone at the conference.
I have, I have no problem with that motion barring anything with Tom, if he finds anything different. I think that would be fine. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we brought Tom in on the discussion. I think even now, at this point, is there, is there any problem with having the addresses on the minutes? Because we've done that for years and years and years.
Is there any problem with having them?
With having them on it, with the minutes as written.
I, I don't know, is the truthful answer.
Well.
I don't, I'm not, I'm sorry. I don't think it's a showstopper, but I got this guidance at the conference, and it sounded pretty strong. So it's something we need to look into.
I don't mind erring to the safety side of it, which would be to remove them.
I would just, Mr. President, I would just say that if we're removing the addresses, we just remove the numbers of the people, because we are required, not required, but we would like to know for history or if we need to review if the people do live within town boundaries. So at least the road will give us at least a rudimentary thing. And in today's age, in reality, if the name's there, nine times out of 10, within 10 seconds, you can get the address. So at least for it printed and maybe be able to cover us for legal, I would just say at least strike maybe the numbers, but maintain the street addresses. And then have Tom look into any legality issues with it. Thank you.
I have to agree with both councilmen, but I do think taking the street address, leaving the street, because I thought standard operating procedure, we need to know if they were, as Councilman Munder said, within the town limits. But we don't really need their house number. I think the street number suffices. So I would agree with Councilman Demoter. Let's get the numbers off there unless the lawyer finds a reason why. Because these are the minutes of that meeting, as stated, maybe from here on out, we don't put the street number, just the street name.
I think your amendment was for tonight's meeting and then further, or for the June?
For tonight's meeting was to take, take everything off and just have the names. And then you'll have time to research this for the next meeting.
Okay.
My thought is, the town has the full addresses. So you'll be able to contact people if you need to contact them. But having their full addresses in meeting minutes that are going to be posted everywhere. My amendment stands.
That's fine.
I would like to see the addresses come out.
I, I, I'm only, as I mentioned earlier, I think barring anything from Tom. If we're, if we're in violation of anything, obviously, I want to protect people's rights. And, you know, I wouldn't want anything to happen and those types of things. So I have no problem with the amendment. Councilmember Munder, I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from. And I think.
Legal, legal document.
I think as long as we have, I understand. And I think as long as we have their, their name and, you know, if we wanted to, you know, do you live in town or whatever, public comment.
I'm just saying.
We can agree with that.
I'm just saying that it's a legal document. And if anybody wants to look it up, at least the address. I don't have a problem with the numbers coming off. But if the amendment stands, we're altering a legal document, that we should at least make sure that the resident is in town. Street address, not street, street name is fine. And that's what I would say. If the amendment's changed to street name only, that's fine. But if you eliminate the name totally, it could be XYZ from Newmarket coming here speaking. Even though it's just this one thing, it's a precedent set. So I don't have a problem with the number, but complete redaction of the address is concerning, particularly since minutes are concerned, are considered legal, legal documents.
Mr. Mayor?
So, Council President, stay.
One sec.
Hold on.
Pam, just one second, okay? Nope, that's okay. Hold on one sec, hold on, hold on one second, Pam. I'll get you as soon as the mayor speaks.
It kind of brings up a follow-on question, though. When people come up to give public comment, we request their name and their address. Does this alter that process?
I, I would think it would if you, if you do the research and that guidance stands. I think that would alter your process, yes.
Okay, then we definitely need to look into it further. You know, I don't mind playing it safe tonight, but I, I wouldn't say that this is setting a policy for the future. This is just leading us down the road of something that needs to be looked at.
Pam, go ahead now.
I would just say that I agree with Councilmember Munder. At least the street name should remain, you know, for verification that they are town residents.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to sort of go back to my original comment is, let's just have Tom take a look. If there's anything that says you're not allowed to have a, a house number with a street, we'll remove it. If he comes back and says, "You can't have the number, but you can have the street," then I'm okay with doing the street. Or if he comes back and says, "There's nothing that says you can't do anything," then I'd say we leave the minutes and we can get clarification at the next, at the next monthly meeting. And we can let the public know that. Is that okay?
So for tonight, you want to leave everything? Is that your, your proposal?
So until Tom does a little bit further research, I think the mayor asked a direct question, and he wasn't able to, to fully answer that question. And I, I never like to put Tom on the. I never like to put Tom on the spot, and that's why I say, let's give him a minute to do some research. He might find a case somewhere that says you're supposed to. Who knows?
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm, let me just say, I'm fine if I make the amendment and people say no, and I'll vote no, but based on what I heard, I always like to implement what I hear in terms of guidance as soon as I can, so it's not going to hurt my feelings. I'm gonna stick with my amendment and then take the vote, and we can move on.
I appreciate it, because we've taken a lot of things from MML and applied it to our meeting, and the agenda is one of those things. So we appreciate it. Tom put her on your list to do. Well, go ahead and continue with the voting of the minutes. We had a first and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Demoter is a nay. All right. Chief, there you are. Next up is Chief Reitz with our Mount Airy Police Report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I try to keep this very brief tonight. Can you hear me, Zellin? Okay. With the monthly report, Chief Reitz of the Mount Airy Police Department calls for service for the month of June was at 639. That's roughly a 2% increase from May and a 25% decrease from the previous June, which was 854 calls for service that month. For traffic enforcement, conducted 95 traffic stops during the month, issued 66 citations, 108 warnings, 12 safety equipment repair orders. There were no DUI arrests, and we had one other traffic arrest for the month. Significant incidents and crime trends during the month of June, larceny, theft and fraud continue to be the two most prominent offenses that we experience in town. Most of these cases involved organized retail theft as well as distraction-type thefts from our business community. Business owners were urged to be mindful and watch for suspicious activities and to alert the Mount Airy Police Department if they have any concerns. We've had a couple incidents where an offender will distract employees while another gains access to restricted areas and commits a theft. These corporates normally work in pairs or of two or three or more. Most of our frauds that we experience have been involved in some type of online internet involvement in the form of online purchases and unverifiable employment schemes. So if you're going online, please do whatever it takes to protect your information, your personal information, and remember, a good rule of thumb is if something seems too good to be true, it probably is. So again, our Group A offenses during the month, we had 10 larceny thefts, seven frauds, four assault offenses, four destruction of properties, and three narcotics offenses for a total of 28. That's an increase of 87% from May of 2022. Group B offenses, we had six during the month, which was a 14% decrease from May. During the month, we also made noncriminal arrests, and we had zero opioid overdoses. So that will be the Mount Airy Police Department report. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have, do you have one over, I'm not trying to correct you. Do you have one overdose?
There was an overdose, but it was a non-opioid overdose.
Oh, thank you very much.
We report the opioid ones as a rule of thumb, so.
Thank you for your clarification. Counsel, go ahead.
Chief, just a couple of things. I'd like to say thank you for your work at the July 4th fireworks. Got out a little bit quicker than normal, but there were some concerns.
That's probably the most hectic day around town for the whole year for all of us, so yes. It seemed to go very well, and we didn't really have any major issues or problems. So we just have to expect that during that time, that night, that's one time of year that traffic's going to bottleneck, because there's one way in and one way out, and that's the only way you can flow traffic in and out, so.
I just found it amazing that people were actually parking along the curb, the side of 27, hindering the flow of traffic on the state road farther down by the park.
Right, and that's one of the things that we brought up in our after-action review of the whole, the event, and one of the things we have to look at trying to fix a little bit better next year. So we probably have to get some signs and post on it, no parking during the event, and try to tackle it that way, so.
I saw the state tow trucks. I was hoping, I was thinking that they were maybe being towed by the state. But anyhow, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd add a comment as well. So I received a letter in the mail, and I would have just filed it away, but it came with, came with a finishing line that said that somebody would be willing to help us. So I'll go ahead and let it out for the public. It's from the Chief of Police of the Bel Air Police Department, and it's a letter that commends you for helping them with their promotional board. And what it offers at the bottom is that it would be our privilege to assist your agency in the future if you have similar needs. So I appreciate you building goodwill with other police departments.
Thank you, thank you.
I just had one comment, again, thank you, on the 4th of July. I noticed there was a traffic bottleneck, and you changed the pattern, which was phenomenal working with the committee. As people headed south on 27, we had three more lights, and I noticed after a period, some of your officers went down and took those intersections to get that traffic moving.
Yes, yes.
So thank you for being fluid and making changes as you, you know, as it happened.
Thank you. Yep, that's part of our plan, you know, we knew it was a very dynamic situation, and we had to kind of hopscotch our way down the road to open up the road to get those lanes flowing all the way through. Part of it's dealing with a shortage of personnel, which we're trying to also rectify. And once we get back up to full staff, that won't be as much as an issue and so forth. But obviously, that was one of our concerns as well.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it, and I'm just gonna make a recommendation. If you can just hang around, we have something that's coming up in the agenda.
I'll be here, sir. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Bruce Walz with the Mount Airy Fire Company Report. Although I felt like I did a pretty good job last month, he's back.
He found some flaws.
Before I give the Fire Company Report, I just put my election board hat on. We always have to determine whether or not someone's a resident, and there are streets in town where you have to know the house number to determine whether or not it's within the town limits. So just recording down a street on certain situations would not give you the fact that they're a town resident for your prior discussion.
Thank you very much.
Also, if the petition requires review of whether or not they're a registered voter, I think it's only a town resident. That would fall, I guess, to the board. And with the primary election going on now, there would be a delay, so we doubt we'd be able to do anything for a month or so. From Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Incident Report for June, rescue calls, we had 99 in Carroll, 53 in Frederick, 9 in Howard, 7 in Montgomery, for a total of 168. Fire calls, 15 in Carroll, 5 in Frederick, 7 in Howard, 6 in Montgomery, for a total of 33 calls, which gave us 114 calls in Carroll, 58 in Frederick, 16 in Howard, and 13 in Montgomery for a total of 201 calls. We have a couple activities coming up. First, the 6th of August will be the carnival. Again, it's a week later this year, so please hope you'll come out for that as you have in the past. Also, we will have the Amish Outlaws Music Show on the 30th of this month. The grounds will open at 5:00 PM. No food or drink will be allowed, and we are asking for a $20 donation for parking for that event. So we're looking forward to that to be a good time, and there will be a beer garden for that also.
That's why there's no food and drink.
I know, but it's no food, you said.
No, you can't bring food, you have to buy our food.
Ah, but you said no drink, and then you said beer garden, so we're thinking that's...
Carl, is it your chicken?
We'll take care of you, Carl.
I can't do chicken. What was that?
I said, we'll take care of you.
Okay, thank you.
As it's, as I mentioned before to the town council, you know, the Carroll County now has a fire department, Carroll County Department of Fire and EMS Services. And one of the things they're working on is eventually taking over the administration and staffing of paid personnel in all the stations. One of the first things that the new director that we had did was we worked and created a Department of Fire and Rescue Services strategic plan for the county. And I'll forward to you a link, and I encourage you to read through some of the challenges that we're facing. But I just wanted to point out that... I had the page marker and it fell down. If you were to look at the demand for service in the county, this is what they call a heat map, you'll find that there are five areas in the county that account for most of the calls, and one of them is Mount Airy. Under the current fiscal year funding through Carroll County Government, as they've moved to take over the funding and operation of these, staffing of the volunteer fire departments, they funded three of the five areas. We were not one of them. So we need to make sure that we work with the incoming Board of County Commissioners to make sure that they consider this, continue to consider this an important thing, and it's quite a fiscal initiative for the county to take on. But hopefully, in FY '24, we will be funded, and the administration of the paid personnel will be taken over by the county for our station.
Can I, can I ask a question? What, what amount was given to the other stations?
We can't really say it as an amount, because I don't have all those figures, and you have to figure how many staffing, for instance, Westminster and Sykesville will have two, as well as Tawnytown, will have two units staffed, and they have to work out the staffing for that. But the figures that were given, and again, I don't have them off the top of my head, they might be in the report here, or I can get those for you. But, you know, we're talking in millions of dollars. We actually, the volunteers said, we want you to fund all five hot areas, plus giving money to the other stations for their part-time personnel, and the county commissioner said we just can't afford to do that.
If you would please try to locate those numbers and email it to us. Or you can just email me and I'll forward it.
I'll send that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, so just wanted you to be aware of that. Any other questions?
No, I was gonna ask you about that, what you just said about the county taking over. So thank you, because I knew it was coming up and issue right now for some cake mentioning. So thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next up, we have our Civil Air Patrol Report presented by Captain Rolfe. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. This is our report for June 2022. Under significant activities and missions, the squadron responded to the aircraft crash at the Clearview Air Park earlier last month. It's actually the, occurred the night of last meeting. Our squadron responds to these as to provide site surveillance, mainly in request to the Maryland State Police in order to secure the area until FAA or NTSB investigators can arrive on site. We were relieved later the following day to hand over to the FAA folks. Under community support, the squadron provided traffic control and pedestrian safety support for an event held by the Mount Airy Baptist Church. Under achievements and our membership growth, we had one cadet complete an encampment up in Pennsylvania, and two new cadets have been enrolled this month. Operational status, our ground team remains fully operational and ready, and we also continue to test new communications capabilities, one of which is actually being expanded as a result of that Clearview Air Park mission, as we had a pretty successful kind of surprise test of it for that mission. And on the horizon, we have another, several other community events that we're expecting to support, to include the Mount Airy Mile that's coming up in August, and a couple other local community events. And we have several members who are scheduled to attend additional emergency services training, either in the community for CERT training or provided by the wing for their one-week academies coming up. Depending on your questions, that completes my report for this month.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for coming out on July 4th with a group of seven people to help us roll up that orange fencing. And we weren't quite sure what we were going to use you for, but that ended up being the task at hand. It took about two hours, and you saved us, you know, 14 man-hours of having the staff out there on the 4th of July or coming out even on the 5th to do that work. So I greatly appreciate it, and I greatly appreciate you, I'll say this early, for supporting the Mount Airy Mile and getting that done as well. You do a lot for the community, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely, and thank you for coming out to our meeting this past week as well to express the appreciation of the members.
Any other questions?
I do. I just want to make a comment, because you kind of glossed over it, and I'm reading the report you sent us. And I don't know if the public heard this, but there was a crash at an airpark south of Westminster you responded to. But what caught my attention was, at the request of the Maryland State Police, the Civil Air Patrol provided site surveillance until the FAA officials could arrive to conduct their investigation. So that's kind of huge. So thank you for being available, and I don't think the public realizes, it's kind of an important thing that you're securing a crash site for the FAA. You kind of glossed over that, and that's kind of huge, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain, appreciate it. Have a great.
Thanks.
All right. We'll go ahead and move into new business, and first on the agenda is the road closure to celebrate Mount Airy. This is going to take place on Saturday, August 27, 2022, from the hours of 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Nancy Hernandez is looking to close Main Street from Prospect to Paradise. And councilmembers in front of you, you have your packet of information for the road closure as well as state highway being notified of the road closure.
So I have one comment, if I may.
Sure.
I just wanted, and Nancy's not here, is she? So what I noticed in the packet is when we talk about, because I know that's big with the state highway, we've got the map and where traffic's going to be rerouted, and I want to go to your page right before the map, so second to last page. Yeah, second to last page, I notice, reading through the details, so we're going to be blocking off the road, and traffic's going to be rerouted, Main to Sunset to Hill to either Calvary or Prospect. But Calvary is going to be blocked off on Main Street. So there's, I just want to cross out Calvary there in that second paragraph, because Calvary at Main, if you read this, Calvary, Hood, Center, those are all going to be blocked off at some point, so we can't reroute traffic to cut down Calvary.
Lynn, I may be able to answer that.
Go for it.
What's that?
Go ahead.
So typically, at Paradise, it's a soft closing with a hard closing at Hood. So if residents or, say, employees of Main Street need to get to work or get down to Main Street, they can get through that soft closing at Paradise and then turn left on Calvary or even Hood.
Well, when, when Main Street's going to be locked off and then they bring it down, are you saying at Paradise, somebody that turns on Calvary is not going to encounter cones to stop them from going onto Main Street?
I can tell you that for Oktoberfest, somebody would not encounter cones at Calvary.
There is a note, it says, like, it says movable barricades, meaning that I think generally for...
They'd be removed to permit emergency vehicles, but motors can travel detour routes. So I can tell you there's cones at the top of Calvary whenever Main Street is closed down. So I just, I don't want to misdirect the public.
How about the or statement below it? Because it says that one or from Paradise or Center Street to Park.
That's going Paradise up the other way. I'm talking about when they're coming Sunset to Calvary, I mean to Hill, and it says they might be able to go down Calvary. But if Calvary's going to be blocked off, maybe just Nancy could clarify that. I just don't want to misdirect the public and people think they're going to cut down Calvary. They're going to get to the bottom of Calvary in front of the church, and there's going to be cones blocking Main Street, that's all. That was my only question on that.
So can maybe we just make a note for Nancy about that one statement? Other than that, did anyone else have any other concerns or questions? All right. I'll move that we close the Main Street from 4:00 to 9:00 PM between Prospect and Paradise. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move to another road closure for Oktoberfest. This will take place on Saturday, September 24th from, sorry, Saturday, September 24th, 2022, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Main Street will be closed from Prospect to Paradise as well. AM to 7:00 PM. Main Street will be closed from Prospect to Paradise as well. And since Councilwoman Reed is, is on the, is on the line, this is your event. Nothing major changed as far as the road closure, same as always?
Same as always. And again, it's a soft closure at Paradise with a hard closure at Hood. Yes.
Okay.
Nothing has changed.
All right. And I'll just recommend that you abstain from this vote. I'll make a motion that we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you abstain? Is that okay?
Okay.
Can, can you abstain from the vote since it's your event?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Can we just mark Councilwoman Reed abstains? Thank you. All right. Next up is the recommendation for approval for trail capping contract for rails to trails Main Street. Earlier this, this evening at 6:30, we had MDE in the chambers for a public meeting to discuss the procedures for trail capping, to go over specific details about how the capping will, will take place and they will be monitoring the project along the way. Barney, since this is engineering project, if there's anything else that you would like to add, go ahead and talk about the contract.
Yeah. So of course, that was the public meeting. We don't have approval from MDE yet, but we expect that to come soon. So this is in anticipation of having their approval and having our grading permit approval. But we're looking for your okay to move forward with the capping. We did bid the project out consistent with the RAP, the Response Action Plan of capping the, the site. Also, it includes putting some drainage in some areas so that we don't have like standing water in places. So try to keep the water moving. But we bid it out for the past month and we got five good bids on it. WF Delauter was the cheapest at $517,022. This will come out of ARPA funds, which we do have, we set aside $600,000 for that amount. Now, there, there will be other things that'll come along, maybe some fencing and stuff that is not in the scope yet, that we might want to use that extra funds. But we would like to get the $517,022 awarded. So looking for your approval to do that. So that's the recommendation.
If any council members has any, have any questions for Barney? Go ahead.
Yes, I do, Barney. Thank you. First, a comment. Comment in your memo. You, and under the background section, there's a line that says, while these contaminants are not a risk of leaching into the ground, just a comment, there's always a risk. So this is your wording, your memo, and it's just a comment I'm making. There's always a risk of, of movement of material contaminants. A question about WF Delauter and Sun. Do we know if they've done any kind of work to support a remediation project like this before? And I don't know that it matters or not, but do they have experience in doing this?
Yeah, they do have some experience with that. They have a lot of experience with grading and, and moving dirt and that sort of thing. So yeah.
Right.
They, they cover all bases.
Okay. But they've done like remediation of hazardous materials, at least capping them?
Yes.
Okay. In, in the bid process, were there any criteria that dealt with quality of work or anything like that? Do we have any experience with this company or is this a new company to us?
So WF Delauter, they've been on several projects. We, we used them recently in the last couple of years to manhole repairs.
Okay.
And the work was, was good.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Couple of questions here, Council President. Thank you. I echo Councilman Demoto's concerns and comments here, but I'm noticing the bids that there's quite a difference. So I just want to make sure that was it built into the contract that we won't get surprise billing with any cost overruns or anything? I mean, there's always a chance of within reason, I guess, I want to say.
So really, it's based on unit costs and we, you know, we created the, the estimated quantities. But you know, if you need two feet of dirt, six tenths of a mile, 50 feet wide, you know, you get that pretty accurate. So everybody's using the same estimates, quantities, you know, to come up with this. And so.
Okay.
Some, again, some contractors are certainly more hungry for the work. Some might have the available dirt.
Yeah.
Where others might have to get that dirt.
Okay.
You know, things like that play into it.
All right, I'm just.
But sometimes it's a timing thing as far as.
All right, because I'm echoing Councilman Demoto's comments about, let's see, experience or knowledge of how to do, is that the best knowledge or experience in this type of work? So just, I'm sure we will be watching as, as always diligently. So, okay, thank you.
Did you have a question?
I do have one question.
Okay.
It says 10-foot, but their presentation we just saw is 12-foot wide asphalt path.
I noticed that. And we went back and forth with between 10 and 12-foot. We ended up putting the scope out for 10-foot.
So we're going with a 10, not a 12?
Yeah. And that's a standard minimum for state highway paths, their, their guidelines for pathways. So that's what we based it on.
Okay, thanks.
That was actually one of my questions I had just circled. My other question, Barney, just really quickly, it says this is phase one of the recommendation. How many, how many phases are there?
So what we did is because of trying to cap the steep slopes is more complicated, we wanted to get this cap down, done as, you know, as early as possible. So that's why we kind of broke it into two phases. One, do all the level areas first and then come back with the steep slopes.
So two complete phases?
Correct.
Two total phases. You saw the same chart most of us saw with the parts per million numbers. MDE was, as Councilwoman Galetti was mentioning, a 12-foot. I would probably make the recommendation to go back and, and see if the 10-foot is acceptable for the numbers that they were showing. MDE was talking about a 12-foot, even though some of their presentation, presentation material numbers were convoluted. They said eight inches and then in another slide, it said six inches and now we're six to eight inches of, of stone. If we can possibly just check with, actually not possibly, can we check with MDE to make sure that a 10-foot cap for the pavement is acceptable? Or if we need to do the 12-foot cap instead with, with the pavement?
Sure. So I can answer that right now.
Okay.
Either or is acceptable. Again, that's continued that they approved the Response Action Plan. But the width of the path doesn't really matter. It's, it's, do you, a soil cap of 24 inches or an asphalt cap of eight inches are both acceptable. We did use eight, eight inches in the, plus, yeah, eight inches asphalt for the asphalt cap. But either one is acceptable. You could do the whole thing in soil or you could do the whole thing in asphalt, or you can do as much as you want of, of either or, as long as you cap everything. That's.
Okay.
That's the key. So the 10 versus 12 really doesn't matter.
Okay.
As long as, if you're going to do soil, it's got to be 24 inches depth.
Okay. It, it just seen, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I am no engineer. From what I heard from the presentation, however, when they were talking about impervious surfaces, that not there, not there, not that there's a large amount of leaching, but even considering with erosion and those types of things, that was my only concern with that. I, I appreciate that. All right. So the recommendation if, for trail capping contract in the amount of $517,022 be awarded to WF Delauter and Sun's using the ARPA funds, keeping in mind that we had set aside $600,000. So there is some, as you were maybe referring to, some wiggle room there if, if unexpected costs do show up. I will make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. All those in favor of awarding the project, say aye.
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 No opposed. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the town slash county for Carroll side agreement for approval. And I will let our town attorney, Tom, talk about and answer any questions that the council may have.
Sure. So I did review this town-county agreement substantively. The terms are the same as they have always been for probably more than a decade. The only thing that really changes year to year are the numbers. So.
Thank you for that extensive report.
Did they go up or down, Tom, the numbers?
That depends on what year. I, I don't know whether, my suspicion is they might have gone down.
Okay.
But essentially, this covers various aspects of our activities in terms of planning, subdivision review, annexations, things of that sort. Counties as well. Basically, it requires certain notifications. You may ask, why do we put our annexation hearings out so far? Because although under the state statute, we have to provide 30 days' notice, this agreement actually requires 60 for Carroll County. So it's things like that. It's sort of a cooperative agreement, keep each other apprised of what we're doing.
All right. Thank you.
If I can make a comment. Just to let the council know, I did sit down with Katie this morning and she went through the budget with me and we pulled all these numbers out there. So all, all of the dollar amounts are factored into the current budget, just to let you know that.
Thank you. Also on the last page, I don't know if this paper was provided for the residents. On the last page, you will see the tax numbers, and I think that this is always important. And I think tribute to Mayor Rockenberg and then to Mayor Hushour for keeping our tax rate as low as it is and still be a successful community, I think is, is an applaud for not only the town staff and all of their hard work, but, but for everyone up here serving for the, for the town of Mount Airy. So we appreciate all of that. I'll make a motion for the approval of the town-county agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds.
Council President?
Sir.
I have a, a quick question before we vote.
Sure.
So this applies to, so for developments that within Mount Airy, even for development just within Mount Airy, we provide these to the, to Carroll County and they, they give us their, their comments.
That's correct.
So for example, for the Beck property and the Green Tree property, are they, are they seeing pre-conceptual plans before we approve them? Or would they see them after the council would approve them? Because it talks in here about, under the town of Mount Airy, it talks about plans and such.
You say what page?
Yeah, page number one, the, the fourth line under town of Mount Airy. It says, "In the case of subdivision, copies of any required sketch plans may be forwarded to the county for review and comment."
Right. So I believe John probably has done that and does that as a matter of routine when we receive, for instance, proposed site plans or concept plans.
Okay.
You know, I can't verify that.
Sure.
It's done in any specific instance, but I believe it's done.
So, so if that's the case, do we get to see copies of any comments they might have provided, even on these draft plans? Or?
As a matter of course, probably the council doesn't, although you certainly may request them.
Okay.
Receive them. Because typically in most developments, MXD aside, of course, those are a planning commission endeavor. Here, as you about to probably.
Yeah.
Now, the council has a role and probably should see those.
Yeah. So, so based on that, I, I would just ask the town if they could, if we have any comments on any draft plans, it would be helpful. I think all the council members would probably agree that we, we would like to see those.
Can I piggyback on that? Because I, I thank you for that question. But it says required sketch plans and preliminary subdivision plans. So like for Beck, we're in pre-concept.
Yeah.
Right.
So I'm guessing that is not going to the county yet.
Well, yeah. And that was the question is, would the pre-concept plan?
Yeah, that was a good question. Does pre-concept know?
Fall into that?
Can you answer that, Councilwoman Reed?
I would say that, I'm guessing here, but I would say my best feeling would be probably not until they have an, until we approve a pre-concept plan. Once we approve a pre-concept plan, then it probably goes to the county for comment. I mean, somebody in the planning department would be able to know better how the process normally works. But I would say at this time, since nothing's been finalized, it would just be, you know, best guess on the county side.
Yeah. And the, the other thing is as well, remember this says in case of subdivision.
Right.
Doesn't mean that every site plan, for instance, on a single lot will go to the, to the county. If I recall correctly, the cons, pre-concept sketch plans that you're reviewing, I, I'm not sure whether they're subdivision plans. I suspect they may be site plans, but I, I could be wrong about that.
All right.
Can we get the co-chair of planning, do you have the answer to that?
Well, I think what makes sense.
Bill, come on up, please.
My suggestion, Carl, since you're the liaison, to simply make that request of John Breeding at, at our next planning commission meeting or, or work session. Okay? And then bring back, you know, a full clarification to understand, so council is aware of when there is feedback, when we need to provide it, what, what step in the process. Okay? Because it, I think it's, it's codified, but let's clarify it and be all on the same page with it.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you very much. I didn't mute her. Pam?
Yeah?
Good. Do you have a comment about this?
Um, no, I'm good. I, I, I agree. I think it's probably a good idea to have planning review this.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Are we okay? All right. All those in favor of the Mount Airy town-county agreement, go ahead and, and vote by saying aye.
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 No opposed. All right. Next on the agenda is to schedule our next charter amendment workshop. We left off in the middle of the last one. So if council, if you got, if you would please pull out your calendars.
I throw a question out there real quick.
Is this about the charter amendment workshop?
It is. My question is, which charter amendment are we going to be working on?
The one that we left off in the middle of.
Okay. Because I do see there is an effort to redo the one that just passed last month.
We're not working on.
And that could alter.
Okay.
The next one. So that's, that's why I'm concerned.
Okay. The, the process would be to finish the one that we're, that we're in the middle of.
Okay.
And should the council move forward after the public, schedule public hearing and so on and so forth, that, that charter amendment would come back up?
Okay.
All right. I have several dates that if council members would like to take a look at. I have 7/21, 7/25, 7/27, and 7/28.
The 24.
So Jason, just so you know, we are on vacation. So Jason, just so you know, we are on vacation the week of the 25th. But the 21st works.
The 21st would work, but I've
Parks.
Yeah, Parks, Parks Councilwoman, are they still virtual? Still?
Yeah, they're virtual.
They're virtual, so we could be in here.
These are all workdays for me. I'm flying Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays all this month. However, in August, I'm flying Sunday, Monday, Tuesdays.
One of the recommendation days was a Monday.
Which one?
The 25th.
Is that the planning meeting?
Yeah, 25th is planning.
Okay. I don't, I don't look at the other meetings, I look at my availability.
No problem. Any Tuesdays available? Or the, did the mayor just say Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays is when you're flying?
This month, I'm flying Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays.
Okay. 26th?
I can do it through a telephone, and I've done that before. So if you don't need my presence, I can do it through a phone call.
I could do it through a phone call as well, while we're traveling.
Oh, sorry, sorry Pam, I forgot you mentioned, I apologize.
I prefer we move it into August and try to get, I don't want to do it with two people on phone calls.
Second, that's a Tuesday.
That is, it's Carnival week, but we should be okay here. Tom?
I think it might be important to try and, try and get this in before the next council meeting.
The next council meeting, unfortunately, it's only about two and a half weeks away.
Understand.
And I would rather not rush it.
I think it's important, just a number of things that are moving along at the same time.
Can
The 21st does work. Like I said, Parks and Rec is virtual, so we could meet in the council chambers.
Does, does the 18th provide a conflict for anyone?
Not for me.
July 18th?
That works.
I'm good.
I'll just be via phone call, that's all. Our next charter amendment working around everyone's schedule workshop will be on July 18th. Holly?
What time?
How about 6:30, okay?
Perfect.
Okay. Holly, can you, I didn't, we should have written down the number on the agenda.
It's 2021-3.
2021-3. Thank you very much, so that everyone is clear on that. This will be at 6:30 PM on the 18th. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Mayor, your appointments and reappointments.
All right. Assume we'll take these one at a time, is that what you'd like, council?
Yeah.
First appointment is for Stephen O'Malley to be appointed as a full member of the Planning Commission. He's currently the alternate, and this would move him up to the full membership. And I have an email here from, because I did talk to the planning chairman, and that's her preference as well, but I'll put that one up to the council.
Is that from Roxanne?
The email?
Yes.
Yeah, what it says is, my feeling is that Steve should fill, oh, wait a minute, Mr. Gant should be, yeah, is that Steve should fill the rest of Scott's term and Mr. Gant should be the alternate. And that's, that's what she put in an email this morning.
Okay. Off the top of, I say off the top of your head, you may already know, what's the remaining amount of time for Mr. Sergio's?
April of next year.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor of Stephen O'Malley to be appointed at?
Could I make a comment? So I know the public, a lot of the public, is it okay if I say something real quick?
Go ahead.
A lot of the public is here because of issues with appointing, not appointing. One of the things that we know, the few things a mayor can do is appoint. So I'm Switzerland, in the middle of, as we know, contentious things happening within our team, which actually I'm working on, a third party coming in and working with us. But I've had a lot of people approach me about Mr. Gant, and they weren't necessarily Larry's supporters or not Larry's supporters. And I would actually like to make a motion to have Mr. Gant put, be put on as the full member of the Planning Commission, since Mr. O'Malley's already there. I'd like to get Mr. Gant on as a full voting member of the commission to finish Scott Sergio's term.
This is Councilman DeBoto, sorry, Council President Poyer, may I offer a comment?
Nope, you're fine.
So I want to make a comment to everyone here and to the public. So at the last meeting, I made a statement, which was, I had no issues with the two citizens that were up for being appointed. I had some other concerns. So I spoke with the mayor about my concerns. I am comfortable with our conversation regarding those concerns, and I am very supportive of appointing these two members. So I wanted to make that statement. Just a thought on, I've heard the mayor's preference on who goes into the permanent spot versus the alternate spot. I've heard, it sounds like the Planning Commission chair wants that same process. I would support the nomination as the appointment has stated, and my only thought is, just being respectful to all the, all the volunteers, it seems like we have a process where typically, when someone's in an alternate position, when there's a vacancy, that person does get moved up to the permanent position, because the idea is they've been an alternate, they've had some time to learn and experience the process, et cetera. So, you know, I'd rather not, I'd rather see the alternate be rewarded, in a sense, for being there and participating in an alternate role and now get moved up. That would be my preference.
Do you have any other comment?
No comment on this one, sorry.
And the reason I said that is because last month, it was voted not to move the alternate up. So that's why I was proposing a way to resolve, whatever reason he wasn't voted last month to move up from the alternate position. So I have no problem with the mayor wants, or what the planning chair wants, and I don't know if the co-chair wants to speak for that since she's not here, but I was offering a resolution to the fact that the alternate was not put up last month and voted in, that's all.
Yeah, what I would say is, you know, Steve came in, well, between November and now, so he hasn't been there that long. So it's a little bit of a different scenario, because normally your alternate's been in there a year or more. But in this case, you know, Steve's relatively new to the Planning Commission, but obviously has jumped in, you know, into the deep end of the pool, so, and I greatly appreciate that. You know, sometimes I get in trouble up here for not talking to everybody about this. So this time I did make sure that I kept my emails, got them all here, and then I'm trying to respect a process that has been, even when Martina came in and moved up. And, but, you know, we got a little bit out of whack, you know, between the time I got elected and now, but this has been a standard process for years that the alternate moves up. And they're both going to be sitting at the table, they're both going to be commenting, and usually there's somebody in a seven-person commission who doesn't show up, so the alternate is voting 90% of the time anyway. So if you could just make the votes as they are and let it fall out, I, hopefully tonight, we'll get both these people on the commission and sitting at the table, so.
Councilwoman Reed, did you have any comments, or are you okay?
My only comment again would be that, I stated it last month, that I've never had an issue with either individual being appointed. Again, it was just simply the process that got us to having a vacancy on the Planning That was it.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go to a vote for Stephen O'Malley to be appointed as a full member of the Planning Commission to serve out the rest of Mr. Sergio's time for, till April 2023, I believe. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next up, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ralph Gant to be appointed to the Planning Commission as the alternate, and his application is attached. Thanks.
We saw this last month, so all those in favor of Ralph Gant to be appointed to the Planning Commission as an alternate member, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. And Daniel Gilmore?
Yeah, Daniel Gilmore to be appointed to the Streets and Roads Commission. Again, I reached out to Lynn as a liaison and the chairman as well, and they would both like to see him on the Streets and Roads Commission.
Okay. All those in favor of Daniel Gilmore to be appointed to the Streets and Roads Commission, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Sorry about that, I mixed up my words. And next up, Larry Black?
Yeah, Larry Black to be appointed to the Mount Airy Sustainability Commission. I'm not sure I reached out to you, Jason, but I
I didn't get an email, Larry.
I'm sorry. But I do have an email from Mike Dixon, and he says that he would like to have him on sustainability.
Mike can take my words any day, so if Mike said okay, then so be it. And actually, we need, we need a lot of members on there with our garden and everything else going on, so I appreciate you reaching out to Mike. All those in favor of Larry Black going to the
I ask you real quick, sustainability, they don't have to be a resident?
There's, there's a couple of positions that
Sustainability, one of them?
On commissions, you do not have to be a resident. All those in favor of Larry Black to be appointed to the Mount Airy Sustainability Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We move into ordinances and resolutions. And the first up is ordinance 2022-20. This is an amendment to vehicle and traffic, chapter 105, damage to town property. This is up for adoption. I will go ahead and make a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Galetti, seconds. Any discussion from council members?
The only thing I want to say is, I looked in the area today around Chick-fil-A, it looks like we're missing about a dozen of them again. So I'm not sure if that's your budget or Brian's budget, but we gotta get some more. Okay. So it's definitely, we're still losing, there's at least a dozen of them gone, so 75, it's $1,000.
You just clarified what we're, what we're missing? You're just saying we're missing?
The delineators.
Yes.
That are over by Chick-fil-A. So this was, this prompted, and to remind the public, when the Mount Airy police pull over anybody for any issue over there, we don't get any of the money, it goes to the state. We don't get a penny. They're destroying the equipment and the property over there, and that's costing us as the taxpayers. So I asked for the mayor, we sat down with staff and went through this chapter and found out some of the prices were 20 and 30 years old, right? So we sat and went through with staff and found out the cost to replace certain things and tried to kind of get it up to where it's at now. So they will have the ability to write an equipment ticket now for people that make the U-turns and take out several of those little things called delineators sticking up. I still would like to have a tow truck for the town, because they're making a lot of money over there, but we're not. So that's what this is. This is for, and it's not just that signs in town and any town property, we found out it was really low amounts. We were, we were kind of amazed, the mayor and I. So that was the ordinance to, so that they can write infractions. And the mayor, you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Councilwoman Galetti, for bringing this to our attention and sitting down with staff and myself and actually orchestrating this ordinance. I think you did a fabulous job, so thank you.
All right. All those in favor of ordinance 2022-20, talking about the property, property damage to town, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Perfect. Next is resolution 2022-7. This is to designate Mount Airy, Maryland as a Bee City USA affiliate, and this is also up for an adoption. And this is just one example of the work from the Sustainability Commission. I know Ashley on town staff has been doing a, doing a heck of a job trying to create more pollinators in our gardens, as well as in our town parks, and this just sort of goes along with that. She's not here to answer any questions, and I don't know enough about bees to help you answer your questions, so check Google.
I wasn't gonna, Mr. Counsel, I wasn't gonna ask a question about the bees on this one.
Still can't help you.
Excuse me, Carl, do you have a bee in your bonnet?
Not, not on this one, I don't. Hey, I just got a que, good one. I got a question, does this, you may or may not, this is a serious one. Does this help us get the Sustainability Maryland credits?
Every, every little thing that the Sustainability Commission does, we try to model it after what the funding is for the Sustainability Maryland awards. And so although the answer is not a significant yes, I can probably say for a percentage of 98% that this will go towards those points, and we will continue to achieve points to help us gain Mount Airy, yeah, Sustainability, Mount Airy, Maryland.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to put another plaque up on the wall.
Cool. Thank you.
I have a question from a budget standpoint in the money area. So I noticed on page two, we've got some great ideas authorized to do a celebration, publicity and information, develop programs. I'm assuming Sustainability has a budget and that's in their
We do.
Budget? Okay.
Yep, we do. The only thing
Rose doesn't have a budget.
The only thing not in the budget is your bee costume that you have to order off of Amazon
Yeah.
When we have, when we have the road closure. All right.
I believe it's the mayor is the only one that's supposed to be the king bee, so I'm voting yes to that.
Council President, I have a, I have a comment.
Sure. That's a lot of questions for Bee City USA. I mean, come on, man.
So page two, the very bottom, let me see here, yes, page two, item number D, pollinator-friendly pest management. Create and adopt integrated pest management plan, design used, prevent pest problems, reduce pesticide use, use non-chemical pest management methods. My only point is, and it's fine, but the point is, you're going to need to create a plan for this, and you may end up changing your operations and changing different pesticides and maybe using organic-based or something. My only point is, there are costs to this, and this may change your maintenance operations, and that's something to look at as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would probably venture to say, I know that the Sustainability Commission, even with the garden, is not using pesticides, chemicals on the garden. And that is actually one of the more difficult to try and keep pests, such as groundhogs and other animals away from, from people's plants and vegetables. It's very hard not to use a pesticide. And we are trying to come up, not, not me, but the commission itself is trying to come up and work with the residents on unique solutions to try and keep to try and keep pests such as groundhogs away from their vegetables. It's, it's very easy to, to spray a chemical and call it a day, and you don't need a fence. I mean, we have a ten-foot fence out there just to help try to, trying to alleviate with, with some of these pests. So I know, I know for, for fact that the Sustainability Commission will work very diligently to try and find unique ways to manage these pests, so. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Holy smokes, that was the longest part of the meeting. Any opposed? Councilwoman Reed, are you an aye for Bee City, USA?
I'm an aye.
All right, thank goodness, reelection's coming up. All right. Next up is Ordinance 2022-23. This is for a budget amendment to reallocate and add thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars for radar speed signs. Councilmember Demoter, I'll let you, since we, we did have a quick chat prior, to allow you to, to make a couple of comments before I introduce.
Sure, so, and I'm doing this actually on behalf of, of the Police Department. It also benefits the Main Street Safety Task Force and Streets and Roads, and Councilmember Galetti and I support this additional request for fees. The bottom line is, it's basically asking for an additional about six thousand dollars. During the budget process, the Police Department asked for three electronic radar speed signs for primarily educational use. And what this ordinance is doing is basically, I think in, in researching units, they found a different model number that has some additional features that are very valuable. I think they'll be much more educational, the lights are different, and they grab people's attention better than, than the, the previous units that were budgeted for. So it's, it's asking for an additional six thousand dollars, still three units, just a different model number to get some additional features and capability. And I see Chief Reitz in the audience, is that about? Capture it? You want to?
Okay.
And Councilmember Galetti, any comments?
Yeah, the only thing I want to point out is, it's gonna now be a capital purchase because it exceeds the threshold, so it's gonna be pulled out of the general fund.
Right.
Out of the operating budget.
The general fund operating budget transferred to general fund capital budget. So it's about six thousand more, and I want to point out that one or two of those signs is gonna be the chief's, right? One is Main Street Task Force, but two are the ones we've been discussing at Streets and Roads for about a year to enhance our monitoring capabilities, correct?
Correct.
And this is all, by the way, coming out of your budget, the chief's budget.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to introduce this. Would you like to make a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay. We'll see this next month in August. Next up is Ordinance 2022-24. This is a budget amendment to add one point three million for INI projects. This is also for introduction, and we do have Barney and Katie here. Did you want to quickly say anything? I know it's just for an introduction. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. You don't have to.
That's okay.
Okay.
This is the INI. So this is just money that we did not spend last year because we don't carry over that money. We're looking to a budget amendment to, you know, keep that in the project as we move forward. We did expect to spend more last year, we just, you know, didn't spend all two point two million. We probably should have done a budget amendment, but I'll blame that on myself for not working with Charlene and Katie on that one. So that, that's the reason for this, is just more of an accounting cleanup and keeping that same money in with that project.
So typically at the end of each fiscal year, any, any money that's not used, due to our accounting, not, not necessarily Katie, maybe our auditors, is that the correct term? Our auditors require us to move money that's not used out of, out of the, the budget, and so we're, we're simply putting this back in. It was a project that was not done, and now Barney's ready to move on it for this fiscal year.
Can I ask you, so I see this coming from the first dispersment of the ARPA money. So is that gonna be spent before we get to, we, town administrator, do we have to spend all of the dispersment of the first ARPA money before we get the second? Will this affect us getting the second? I know you love coming to the microphone, I apologize, he's got daggers at me.
We actually received an email today that indicated that Treasury may not require us to fully explain, expend the four point three million to get the next three point three million.
Okay, as long as I get my money for my traffic circle, I'm okay.
We're hoping that-
You know where I'm going with that.
That, that's how we're interpreting it, we're all reading it, and that's what it seems like it looks like, so we may-
What the memo says.
August fifteenth, we may get the other half anyway.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good news.
Thank you. This is just for introduction, so we'll see this more next month and if we have any other questions. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds, so we'll see this again in August. All right. Next up is Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-2. This is for finance, budgeting and purchasing. This is for introduction and to schedule a public hearing. I see you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, you, you have good peripheral vision.
I should have been a pilot.
Yeah, well, we won't talk about my pilot abilities, apparently.
Apparently not.
Is he gone yet?
You can stop asking if you're my pilot.
All right. The only comment I wanted to make is that 2022-2 deals with the finance section, which is Article Six of the Town Charter. We literally just passed 2021-2 last month, and all of a sudden, this thing is back up here. So my question is, was last month a mistake, and is this the correct one? Or was last month the good one, and this one ends up being a waste of time and money? I'm not happy that we went through two workshops, town attorney fees, advertising fees, darn near a year, to get 2021-2 passed. It passes, and literally one month later, we want to go back into it when we have four more charter amendments that we're still working on that could alter this one. So what I'm concerned about, and what I'm seeing, is that it appears the council is trying to work toward a, and I don't take it as a personal affront, but there is a category called a weak mayor council, as opposed to a strong mayor council setup for town government. And what I'm seeing, based on the last charter amendment workshop that dealt with 2021-3 that deals with employment, and the rewrite of this one that basically makes the town administrator the chief financial officer for the town, after we had two workshops and went through this, that what you are trying to do without saying it is turn us into a form of government that is weak mayor and council, where the council basically runs about everything, and the mayor sits over here as a hood ornament, I've said, or basically doesn't have a heck of a lot of authority. And I'm concerned that tonight, when this leaves the station, if this gets introduced and seconded, there's no turning back. We go to a public hearing, and we might end up having workshops, or perhaps a council member next month may walk right out of the public hearing and try to make a vote on this. This is not why I was elected, okay? So please be cautious when you introduce this tonight because you're starting us on a path that will most likely change our government to the point that I'll feel obligated to take this to referendum, and it's gonna end up on a ballot. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it, I'm just telling you that we just passed this last month, and now we're doing it again. It's attorney fees, it's advertising, it's time, it's workshops. What, I, I don't know what went wrong last month, but I feel like, I feel like we're going down a road that we, we're, we're circling around again, and I just don't think it's a good expense for the taxpayers, and I don't think it's why I was elected, so thanks.
Councilmember Munder, go ahead.
All right. I echo some of the mayor's comments, but I was gonna ask for this to be, I don't want to say withdrawn, but delayed until at least what we just passed becomes effective, because as of now, what we just passed is not in effect yet. State code also requires for related to charter amendments, correct wording and everything else, certain technicalities to be done correctly, and if this is referencing something we just passed, it's basically the wrong verbiage that we're working with or seeing, so it's basically we're trying to amend something that's not in effect yet, technically and legally. So it's cleaner if we wait the fifty, the-
The whole system.
Test, test.
Test, test.
Basically, state code requires fifty days from the passing of the charter amendment to-
No, go ahead.
Oh, I just wasn't sure if we were back on.
Go ahead.
Okay. It requires fifty, fifty days. That fifty-day mark is the twenty-sixth of this month. So I think we should just wait, it's cleaner, and I, I don't think we should be messing with something we just passed, too, because I worked very hard on the other one, and it's just, I'm not saying we shouldn't be discussing it again, but let's let the one we just passed take effect, work through the technical difficulties and issues with it, if there are any, before we start changing it. And I just want to make sure we do this in a slow, in a methodical enough manner, since we're dealing with the charter, to make sure we get it right. And that's all I gotta say. I don't think it's wise to start messing with something we just passed without knowing the ramifications, particularly if it's potentially against state code on how amendments should be done.
Somebody else say something.
Testing one, too, testing.
Test, test.
Any, any other questions?
Come on, Carl, you're usually good for-
Well, let me see here.
My question is, if we're being recorded, are we being picked up?
Oh, that's a good-
Because people cannot ever hear us. It's bad enough when our microphones are working and we're close, but if we're on Carole Media or Facebook Live-
How about-
We're talking, but I'm concerned that people watching are not hearing what you're saying.
This was not-
Facebook Live and they can't hear?
They cannot hear you.
Okay, thank you.
This was not a plot or a toy, but do you-
Hey, guys.
We're talking, I'm concerned that people watching are not hearing what you're saying.
I have it live streaming, and I can hear everyone on Facebook.
Test.
Just to be safe, Council President, if you did technical difficulties, which I don't believe was planned on any such part, that we just don't talk or discuss this or vote on it, to put it back onto, and just put it back on next month's agenda, which is only two and a half weeks away.
What did, what did Councilwoman Reed say?
She said that on Facebook, it's, by the way, Councilwoman Reed, it's hard to hear you because your mic's not working, so the room can't pick you up, and the cameras can't pick you up, and she said Facebook, she's got it streaming, but we've got someone here saying they can't hear it.
I mean, so-
Hello?
Okay.
Test.
We're back.
We're back.
All right, so-
Councilman Munder.
Should I repeat, just to be, just to be safe?
Well, can I just make a quick comment really quickly?
I would.
So the, all, all of the online features that, that we're doing to provide our meetings to captivate a larger audience, this is something that we've chosen to do. They are not necessarily required. It is your, your, your option or your responsibility to come to a meeting personally, in person, sit in a chair to understand what is happening at the meeting. So due to technical difficulties, should these continue, we, we can still hold our meeting. You, you should really be here in person. The online is extra stuff, so it, bells and whistles per se. Councilwoman, uh, Councilmember Munder, sorry.
Sorry, but that whole captivate thing, it just, I'm laughing at that, not you, the captivating the audience.
Okay, there, I'll, thank you, Council President, for allowing me the second talk due to the, I guess, technical difficulties cutting out when I'll speak, so I'll try and repeat what I just said. I do believe that I do second and agree with some of the mayor's comments. I believe that since we just passed Charter Amendment 2021-2 that was introduced last year, that we should wait on this one because technically, by state code, the amendment we just passed is not in effect yet. So, and state code also, I believe, requires that whatever we're changing to be referencing to have the current, I want to say the current language that's trying to change. If this is based on what we just passed, the wording is incorrect in the charter amendment or the resolution. And also, we should just wait. There's a lot of tension in the, in Mount Airy right now. We worked through it, we did workshops, we agreed to, not work around, but what did you say? We did compromises between the council and the mayor on it. It might not be the best, but it does, hopefully will work, and we should just wait on this until we are all completed with the other amendments, or just not let this one move forward. It is a matter of process, and I believe the process should be followed on this, and we should just wait to, at least at a minimum, wait to the current language is in effect.
Council President, point.
Yep.
So let, let me ask, to get a reading from Tom, our town attorney, because my understanding was by introducing this, we are in no way legally violating anything, it's, it would be appropriate to move forward with this. So what is your reading, Tom?
So this is for introduction at this point.
Correct.
So I think that it's lawful to introduce it. Now certainly by the time you have a public hearing, which is really the first requirement that the state code lays out for charter amendments, you should have, you should space that so that you know which, what the charter is that you are amending. The current, you know, the, the one that's in the books now, or the one that's got passed, what, a month ago or so? But, you know, you can introduce-
Okay.
-it in this form.
So I have, I have additional comments that I'd like to make, and I, I just, I just have a, a different point of view in terms of what we're trying to accomplish with this. I think it's important that, that we, we do get it right in terms of how, how we want our government to operate, really more in the future moving forward. It's, it's not about the current mayor, it's about the framework of government and what is gonna be best for the citizens of Mount Airy and, and the town staff and everyone moving forward. So, and I believe this is a uniquely council-driven process. It's the council's responsibilities as part of what our duties are, to make charter changes and amendments and such. So I do have additional comments. I'd rather just introduce this and see if there's a second, and then if it's- I'd rather just introduce this and see if there's a second and then if it's seconded, I'll make my additional comments.
If you want to introduce it, you have my blessing.
Okay. So I would like to introduce Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2022-2.
Is there a second?
Steve, I'll second it. I want to hear what else you have to say.
Okay.
Okay. There is a second, so we will see, uh, we need to schedule the public hearing at the beginning of the
Can I have a chance to make some comments since everyone else has? If that's okay.
Okay, sure.
Just because I've talked to a lot of people in the public and I've been doing a lot of my own research, a lot of people don't realize that November 1st, 2021-2, this was introduced with the town administrator as the CFO, not taking away the CEO from the mayor. A week later, November 8th, switched back to the mayor. Switched back to the mayor as the CFO. So the question is, do we want the mayor to be the CFO and the CEO? Or, I started doing some research and all these other towns, only four that I was able to get ahold of, the mayor is the CEO and the town administrator or city administrator is the CFO. So the question is, how do we break down those duties and who does what duties? It has nothing to do with the person. As I've told my fellow council members, you never go after a person. When these are introduced last summer, you go after the job and the position, you don't go after the person. Has nothing to do with the mayor, has nothing, in my opinion, or the town administrator. The question is, what's the most fiscally responsible and from an internal, again, I always go back to the accounting thing, internal controls, you guys don't have one person doing certain things and we certainly don't want to have one person signing checks. So, I don't have an issue with setting up some public hearings, but I would also like to see a lot of workshop to go through this because I think it's important. I think we need to look at this from a long-term, when we're not even around here anymore, sitting at this table standpoint. So I don't have a problem looking at it again, but I would like to see some workshops and public hearings before we ever vote on this.
What changed in the last month? When did a long-term picture
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can't have public comment right now.
Well, I just gave
Okay, thank you.
So I
Can we have a, the, will the last charter amendment take effect before our next meeting? Can we have a public hearing for August? Or is that not enough time from when we passed the last one? Do we have to wait till September?
Well, remember though, that you also have to have 21 days advertised in advance of the next hearing. So if I'm counting out the days right, that's going to be real tight to have an August 1st public hearing.
Okay.
Council president, may I have?
Sorry.
That's fine. Sorry, I thought the town attorney was done. Sorry, Tom, if I interrupted. Okay. I, I said this before, that if this had gone introduced in second, that I would request that this be put to the back, bottom of the pile for the charter amendments because with the push that we have seen tonight on finishing up or having a second workshop on 2021-3, now there seems to be a push to get this publicly heard for the first time within a month of it or a couple of months being introduced. I'm beginning to seriously begin to get concerned that this is going to be railroaded and rammed down, not intentionally, but it could be perceived by the public as this is on an extremely fast track for some unknown reason. And we have so much contention that I don't want the overall purpose of all the other charter amendments that are out there that are highly beneficial to the staff of this town to get lost in this and just give up on. I think we need to finish up with the work that we have. By that time, we should see if, if we could be able to think a little bit better about what we just passed, see if there's concerns with it and really workshop this too, because this is, I'll agree with what councilwoman Giletti indicated, there are a lot of other towns out, out there. I'm doing my research, I'm looking. This type of setup is not unusual. What I'm finding out that is, there is, councilwoman, is, there's various forms of it, there's various duties, there's various things. I found one today that the mayor does all this, but yet the finance department really does some of the budgeting, forms of budget and things of that. So we need workshops if we go this route and we all need to do proper research on it to make sure we get the setup right because the mayor should have some say and oversight of it. But we should just do the research and not really rush this, this quick by setting up a hearing within a month when we have at least four more charter amendments and I don't see this interfering or implying with any of the other charter amendments out there. So quite frankly, this should just go to the bottom of the pile. Like, I mean, it's like, then from now on, we introduce something we're working on and it can just go get pushed to the front of the pile for hearings, which I don't think is right.
So, a couple of comments.
First, I, I don't agree with the sentiment of putting this to the bottom of the pile because in my view, the, whoever is the CFO and whoever does the hiring and firing and supervising, those are two core kind of functional areas. And to me, you need to define those first because there are indeed other things that trickle down and stem from that. So it's important to get those in place first. Let me, um, have about, I mean, everyone else has talked for quite a bit of time. I have, I have something I'd like to, to read into the record to support this proposal. So, I didn't launch the Charter Review and Revision Initiative that's now underway. In fact, I think it was councilmember Munder who initiated that.
I will tag my name onto that as well.
So someone else did that. But now that it's underway, like I do on all town initiatives I'm asked to participate in, I take it very seriously with a questioning attitude and I do my research. I believe the changes that I'm proposing regarding the mayoral position and the town administrator puts into place an enhanced governing framework that is in the best interest of the citizens and the town staff and will help us achieve further excellence in government. It's a continuation of the efforts to more clearly define and effectively utilize the town administrator position and, while some may not see it this way, to actually enhance the mayoral position. It's also based on lessons learned from serving with two mayors now, as well as reviewing previous town administrations and the mischief-making and real-world conflicts and potentially inappropriate incidents that I researched, which I believe negatively impacted both the citizens and the town staff and that I believe would be minimized or nonexistent under these proposed changes. Through my research, I found that this model of the town administrator serving as the CFO, and also, by the way, as the hiring, firing supervisory lead, is widely and successively used by other towns in Maryland, to include Bel Air, Westminster, Annapolis, Rockville and Bowie. So my message here is, other towns seem to flourish in this system. So as one example on this, when I was at MML last month, I did a lot of networking, I ran into the mayor of Rockville, Mayor Bridget Newton. I asked her what she thought of their system because they use this system. The city administrator is the CFO as well as the hiring and firing official. And she said, "I love it." She said it gives her much more time to do the outward engagement with her citizens and think and act strategically. And the most important thing she said that resonated with me and for our town, she said, "It keeps the politics away from the town staff." I see the same advantages for our town government, staff and mayoral position. And speaking for myself, I'd, I'd love to work in that kind of a setup since it's the one I'm very familiar with, that I applied as a senior executive and how most governments are typically run. So in closing, I ask the citizens and my fellow elected officials to do your research, reflect on what is in the best interest of our town and in the future for our town, keep an open mind and see the long-term benefits and advantages to our system of governments, which translates to best serving our citizens as you consider these changes I've introduced. And to the citizens, if you have any questions that my motives or anything other than what I just discussed, let's have a chat about it, not on Facebook, I'm not a Facebook person, all the while treating each other with dignity and respect. So I'm happy that this has been introduced and seconded. I think, I think this is a really important conversation and as you see, I feel very strongly that this is a model that would be in the best interest of the town and actually, Mr. Mayor, while you may not see it, you may actually thrive in such a system. It may give you much more freedom and flexibility to do a lot of different things. So that, that's, those are my comments. I don't know if anybody else has any comments. Thank you.
I would like to offer to
Hold on, one second.
Work with the mayor, is that okay?
He, he wanted, he wanted to say something.
Want to go? Go ahead.
Yes, I, I do agree, I would have plenty of more free time if we went down this route. But my question is, and it's a rhetorical question, everything between November and today was a waste of time and money and resources. Thanks.
May I follow up on that? Actually, if you look at what was introduced, 95, I'll say 98% of the words that are in this introduction are identical to what was in the previous version. The main, the main difference is reassigning the CFO role to the town administrator, but all the other words, all the other progress we made, clarifying, you know, financial reports and how they're given and checks, all of that was not lost, that was not wasted time at all, that was very effective time. This is foundationally, you know, a change in who performs the chief financial officer role. Everything else, we did not waste taxpayer money at all up to this point, so that's important to note.
All right. Regardless of all of your speeches, it's been first introduced and seconded, and then just checking with Tom, we're going to have a public hearing in September. So if we can just schedule that and, um, 6:45 just in case? 6:45? Okay. So September, and then I believe that's a reschedule of the council meeting, which needs to be rescheduled anyways. We did it already, so just, um, someone remind me?
September 12th.
September 12th at 6:45, we'll have this public hearing and then followed by our regularly scheduled, uh, town council meeting at 7:30.
Council president, just a quick question related to the process here, not going to, it seems like everything else that was introduced went to workshop prior to public hearing. Is that correct? Then why
But is that correct?
Tom? And then why, then if everything went to a workshop, if it, sorry, go ahead, sorry, Tom. I don't, I don't, I can't remember the, I can't remember
It was on the agenda to introduce and, and schedule a public hearing.
I believe that 2021-2 may have had a public hearing, as might have the, some of the others at least. Then they went to workshop and then the latest one came back, had another public hearing, I believe, and then was voted on at some point.
So the correct order is intro, schedule, public hearing, have a workshop, do something else.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, councilman. I just wanted to make, it's been
We're still following procedure.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Not a problem. We have no unfinished business. And so we are at the mayor, council and staff reports and I would just like to remind those that attended MML, if you have anything short and important that you would like to share, please go ahead and share as, as you attended that meeting. Mr. Mayor, we'll start with you, sir.
All right, thank you so much. It was good to go down to MML as a mayor and talk to other mayors and see how they run business and stuff, but I also sat through some of the regular courses, including the Open Meetings Act. And it was good to get a refresher on that because I hadn't sat through that one in, in quite a while. But MML is, is money well spent. Granted, we're going to Ocean City and we got to play putt-putt, but, uh, but the courses and the networking all make it very worthwhile to go down there, as well as looking at all the exhibits of different ways that different towns do things and different things that are out there that are available. So, so I appreciate all the council members who went down there, all the ones who've gone down there for years and years before and brought back that knowledge to the town to make Mount Airy a better place. Going into my report, I got a calendar up front that talks about all the things that I did, but on the second page I have notes and I'll go straight to that. One note I left off is that Guyer's Towing went out to Sykesville and pulled back two historic VNO baggage carts out of the barn for us and they're over in Public Works. I think Wayne Evans and some of the Historical Society people are going to put those carts together and make them a real nice display for the museum. Jason, are you going to, I'm sorry, council president?
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Are you going to be talking about the community garden? If you are, then I won't.
Uh, no, go ahead.
Okay, uh, community garden project is underway, progressing well and the residents are planning all kinds of stuff out there. Again, thank you to the many sponsors, including assistance from Ross Construction, who built the road and did some excavation out there, the Mount Airy Rotary Club that came out with a $8,000 grant to help, uh, help with the project, Sherry Kates of State Farm Insurance is putting money toward the project and Walmart has provided a couple thousand dollars worth of items for the project. So, uh, so that's a real success story. It's kind of like pickleball, you know, you just throw it out there and when it succeeds, you're like, holy cow, I had no idea. So, uh, but it's a great project. Also wanted to say thank you to Rich Anderson of Family Air, uh, who came out and serviced the air conditioning split unit that's in the caboose and he did that in gratis, uh, which is really nice because nothing is cheap when it comes to freon and that sort of stuff. MASTS, the Mount Airy Senior Task Support Group is still running a shuttle service from the senior center down to the farmer's market and, and Bill, if I speak wrong, tell me, I think we're opening up that bus to anybody, anybody who wants to park at the senior center, jump on that bus and come down to the farmer's market. It'll save you from having to find a parking space down in the farmer's market and then bring you right back there. So kudos to MASTS for putting that together. The July 3rd fireworks display was outstanding and I wanted to extend a thank you to Denise Fox, Ben Gulicki, gotta pronounce it right, and Chris Coleman for spearheading the event. I see Mark Minjona was out there, I think I'm the only guy who can say Minjona correctly. So, uh, he was out there as well. Thank you to the sponsors, thank you to the town staff, Public Works and the Mount Airy Police Department for making it a great event. And also I've already thanked the Civil Air Patrol for coming out on July 4th and saving the town quite a bit of money in the cleanup process. The Historical Society's Bag and Basket Bingo went on on June 24th. It benefits the Historical Society, McKenzie, the Caboose and Rails to Trails. They made good money, there weren't as many people who attended, but everybody who attended spent a lot of money. And, uh, most importantly, there was coconut cake from Mary Van Meter's mother, so, and appreciated her doing that. The Historical Society is planning to begin tours featuring haunted and ghostly stories throughout the downtown district. So just be on the lookout for that because you may have an opportunity to hear about some of the ghostly things in Mount Airy. The Mount Airy Mile, sponsored by the Rotary Club, is August 13th. The race will begin somewhere near the Bank of America, they're trying to move it to exactly where they can get the 5,280 feet out of it. The finish is at Liquidity Ale Works, which is the bank building down here, so that'll be great. The Rotary Clubs and the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company's Third Annual Duck Race sales are underway. The race is on September 18th, the duck race runs like a raffle, only your ticket is a small rubber duck with a number on the bottom of it, okay? And they race these down a waterway. The other thing that happens is quack attacks. You'll start seeing ducks in people's yards and that's an effort by people giving a small donation to the event. donation to the event, and then several ducks end up in their yard with a letter on the door that says, if you'd like to put ducks in your neighbor's yard, then you can give us twenty bucks, and we'd be happy to go and do a quack attack on them. Firemen's Carnival is coming up with the parade on August fourth, so please attend and support the event. And the Maryland primary is on Tuesday, July nineteenth, everybody please go and vote. Remember, all of Mount Airy will now be represented by District Five, which is Carroll County, so if you live on the Frederick County side, Patty, you're voting for Carroll County people to be your representative, and I'm in the same boat as well. So, and that's about it. Your congressional district line runs right down Main Street, so literally if you're on the east side of, of, of Main Street, then you're voting for a different congressperson than you are if you live on the west side, so, kind of confusing, I'll try to do a video on it explaining all the different districts and, and the adjustments, but it is interesting to see all the Carroll County people knocking on doors over on the Frederick County side, and that completes my report.
And that's not an error. That's not an error. I was in several meetings about the congressional map, and it's a hot mess. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. And next up is Rex and Parks, and Councilwoman Reed.
Yes, the Recreation and Park Board met on June sixteenth, that is the week that we were at MML, and I was on vacation the remainder of the week, so I was not able to attend the meeting, but I did watch on Facebook. Chairman Mike Regal shared his comments related to the Riggler annexation, he then opened up discussion to the board. The feedback was mixed, but I think everyone pretty much agreed that they love Windy Ridge undeveloped, but they can't ignore the need to access the park for athletic fields, so I believe in the next meeting, we are going to have more discussions related to that. The last two Windy Ridge Trail Days since our last meeting was June eleventh and July second. The Ellis's are applying for an RTP grant, which is federal funding used to develop recreational trails. I believe those award announcements come out in the fall, and the Ellis's are hoping for about sixty-five thousand dollars to construct the more difficult sections of the trails. That is a twenty percent matching grant, but volunteer hours do count towards that twenty percent, so if anyone in the community has a free day and wants to, to help, reach out to the Ellis family. Prospect Park now has a pickleball court inside the basketball court, the East-West Park paving has been completed. Summit Ridge, the soccer fencing was put up at Summit Ridge, as well as a baseball backstop. Just a reminder that Rails to Trails does remain closed during construction, please do not walk along the path during construction, it's pretty messy back there, and there's some hazards, so please be careful. Upcoming Weed Warrior Workshops on July fifteenth and August nineteenth at Windy Ridge Park from ten AM to twelve PM, you can find information on the town website. The Pump Track, the volunteer group continues to fundraise, they have no groundbreaking date yet, but they are hopeful for the summer. Camp Night is August thirteenth, more information related to that is also posted on the town website. And lastly, the board has been talking about creative ways how to add more pickleball courts in town, so they are going to temporarily line a tennis court over at Watkins Park with tape, sort of as a test run to, to ensure that pickleballers and tennis players can, can interact at the same time, and, you know, nothing is disrupted, we don't want to take time away from our tennis players, so they're looking into doing that hopefully soon. The next meeting is July twenty-first via Zoom, and that completes my report.
Thank you. And next up will be EDC and Planning by Councilmember Mundur.
All right, I will start off with EDC. The EDC meeting was held June twenty-ninth at seven PM here in Town Hall, I'll say this before I forget it, elections were held, the EDC now, the new president or chair of EDC is Josh Timmerman, oh no, excuse me, not Josh, Josiah Timmerman, and then Donna Marie Needle is the new secretary of, of EDC. Corporal Ginever of the Mount Airy Police Department came in and gave an update on related business happenings in town with the police, and he did mention that, and I'll apologize to the chief if he picked, said this already, but coming up on July twenty-eighth, there is what's called Pack the Cruiser Event, or Pack the Cruise Event, here to, to support the Mount Airy Net, there are two locations, if I'm reading it correctly, one at Mount Airy Food Line and at Walmart, between four and eight PM, please, please, please come out and pack these cruisers, because the Mount Airy Net has sent out a SOS for certain supplies for the summer and stuff, so they are in desperate need of certain items. I believe he's indicated that the list of what they need is on their website, if not, give them a call, or just feel free to pick something up and drop by the Cruiser, the Pack the Cruiser Event, or the Mount Airy Net at North End, at the, on North Main Street. Other items were discussed. Melissa Thorne gave an update on some happenings, one of the happenings is believed that we have applied or waiting for federal money this year that will be used for certain upgrades to the downtown and Main Street area, one of them is wayfinding signs for the businesses farther down Main Street around George's Girls and Cryin' Johnny's and stuff, so please out there, people out there, there is more to Main Street than just the Commons, it does not stop at the Commons, please go down the hill and check out some of the other wonderful shops, and the new, is it the Fort County Barber Shop that moved there? Is that what it was called? Yeah, the, the Fort County Barber Shop moved back on Main, Main Street, so we do have it, so please, there is another, a south end of Main, Main Street here. The next meeting is July twenty-seventh at seven PM here in Town Hall, and I will, so before I get an email from Alice, I will remind people that the farmer's market every Wednesday until middle of September, from, I believe, four to seven, Dick, or is it three to seven? Three, three to seven PM is the Mount Airy Farmer's Market, it has been well received, there are a variety of vendors, they change from time to time, so please come down and enjoy fresh vegetables and other goodies at the farmer's market. I will move on to Planning Commission now. Planning Commission was held June twenty-seventh, extended time, we held a workshop or various things at the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Carnival Grounds at the Activities Building, we held, it was all related to the Green Tree property, then the meeting itself for the Planning Commission started at seven thirty, and various items were discussed. There was a request, I believe was approved for extension of a time for the Twin Arch, for a lot or a project over, uh, Twin Arch Business Park, I believe it's the Service Master, related more towards construction costs and things of that nature, they're having issues getting materials and supply, and their one-year extension was beginning to come to a close, so they requested a sex, a, a second extension of, of one year, that was granted. There was a talk of a replacement building for King Sports, that will be continued. We reviewed the wording, or were given the wording for chapter one of the master plan update to review, and have comments back to, to present at the next Planning Commission The thing that was, I want to mention here for the council is please, they are requesting us to get together with them for a workshop, to discuss our concerns over the cease, the community commercial and neighborhood professional ordinance. They would like to know basically what, why we didn't vote them through, why we didn't approve them, those things of nature, so we can improve them and get them passed, because since we're in the process of redoing the master plan currently right now, we kind of need to know how these play into the process, or the plan of the town itself. So I was hoping for, if we can, the next meeting obviously is at the end of July, but that might be kind of quick for people to redo their schedules, so I was hoping that we could at least all show up or have a workshop prior to the Planning Commission meeting, which is in August, which I believe is scheduled for, and it's not listed, let me dig that.
What is it, the last Monday?
Yeah, the last Monday in August, the twenty-ninth. So if you can do that either via phone or physically in person, please let us know sooner rather than later, so that can be scheduled, because if not, it might hold up the master plan process that we are in, the process of finalizing now.
Would that be for your planning meetings, or what, at six thirty?
I, I would say six thirty, quarter to seven, I would have to work out, work it out, out with Roxanne to formalize, but it's more the date more so, because it is the planning, worst case, it would be during the normal Planning Commission meeting, because we do have the Planning Commission members, we need to, if we need to start earlier.
What time is your typical meeting start?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Council-
Here in Town Hall.
I'm sorry, are you done your report?
Uh, yeah, that's good, yes, for the essence of time, because it's actually kind of earlier at this meeting, that concludes the report. Next one is the meeting is what date, was it the twenty-ninth of August at seven o'clock here in Town Hall, maybe a little bit earlier, so stay, stay tuned. Thank you.
So I have a-
Oh, excuse me, not August, thank you, Councilwoman Galetti, we do have, the next meeting is July twenty-fifth at seven PM here in Town Hall. Thank you.
So Councilmember Mundur, I don't expect you'd have the answer, and it doesn't have to be resolved tonight, but I, I do have, again, a questioning attitude, so my question is, we're in the middle of the master plan process, or getting towards the, the end of the process where people who asked to have their property rezoned have come in and made their presentation and gotten a, a preliminary reading from the Planning Commission. How, how can we be modifying neighborhood professional and community commercial land use categories right in the middle, and in some cases perhaps after, we've already heard some requests for rezoning? I mean, it seems to me you would either make changes to your ma, changes to your zoning requirements before a process or after a process, but it seems like you're doing it in the middle of the rezoning request process, so maybe I'm just misreading that, and maybe my concerns are misplaced, but I just want to better understand that. We can do that-
No, I get it, and that's one of the reasons why the Planning Commission wants to hold the workshops, sorry, I thought we went offline again here, to hold the workshops to get our better feeling, to see if it is something achievable or not, not achievable at this time.
But again, I think you've already heard some requests for rezoning that dealt with NP and CC, and you've already given preliminary readings, and now after the fact, you might change those land use? Anyway, it's a-
Yeah, yeah, we can have it, yeah, no, no, thank you, we could have an all-night discussion, no, thank you.
Get it on the radar, okay.
All right, next up is Streets and Roads Commission and Beautification, nope, sorry, Recycling and Sanitation Commission and Main Street Safety Task Force.
There you go.
Councilmember Demoter, sorry.
Thank you, President Poyer. So regarding MML, it was a great experience, it's always a great learning experience, I gave you two examples tonight of lessons learned from the MML that I applied in my, in my work on the council. Regarding recycle and sanitation, we did, we will not be having a meeting in July, our next meeting is scheduled for September twenty-first at seven o'clock. Upcoming yard waste dates are July twenty-third, August thirteenth, and August twenty-seventh. Main Street Safety Task Force, we will be meeting on August second with the Maryland Department of Transportation, we'll be meeting with Mr. Andrew Radcliffe and his team, Andrew is the district engineer for District Seven, having purview over Mount Airy. Some of our objectives at the meeting are to build a working relationship, highlight Main Street safety current issues, as well as increasing safety pressures from changes that have occurred over time, and also those that are coming on the horizon, such as a proposed green tree development at the north end, Center Street, and the traffic circle. A big part of this is exploring the process for how we might go about changing the speed limit on Main Street, making it all to twenty-five miles per hour, as one example, and we'll talk about other, other topics. The town administrator, the mayor, representatives from our Main Street Safety Task Force, and Streets and Roads will attend, and I want to thank the mayor for his continued support of the task force, I think we're making good progress, and we look forward to continuing to have an impact. Continuing to partner with Streets and Roads, really partnering with Councilmember Galetti, I think we have a good partnership, and I appreciate Councilmember Galetti's shared commitment to safety, I think we both have a shared commitment on that, and I'm just, I'm enjoying working with the council member, and I think we have some good things that we're going to be working on together, so it's turning out to be a very good collaboration and partnership, and I, I appreciate it. Lastly, I want to read you a comment, this came out of the town survey, and I actually had this in my Safe Streets Initiative Action Plan, but it's, it's kind of relevant because we're talking about the farmer's market and such, so this was a comment from the survey that somebody entered. It said, "We love the farmer's market and get there early enough to park in the caboose lot. Motorists have been very kind stopping to let us cross Main Street. However, crossing Main Street is dangerous. Other than for the market, we avoid going on Main Street because of the hazardous sidewalks and difficulty in walking to and from the municipal lot. For Main Street businesses to thrive, these issues must be corrected." So I thought that was a very relevant comment, given the farmer's market and, and other initiatives. I will say that if you look at the downtown vision plan, I think the vision plan spoke, spoke to pedestrian safety and improvements that could be made for Main Street, so just wanted to highlight that, that was a comment from a citizen from the survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Streets and Roads Commission and Beautification Commission, Councilwoman Galetti.
I'm going to start with beautification, they met on June twenty-first, I was on vacation, I do have some information. First, beautification is still doing crazy good things around town, the patriotic bountings that you all saw along Wildwood Park, beautification, heading towards the celebration part of Fourth of July, they, I went on their Facebook page, and I can't emphasize this enough to look at what they're doing, and like their page, because what they're doing is non-stop, they work twenty-four hours a day, but they've just worked on Vest Pocket Park, and I want to just read a little bit, this is just a snippet of what they do every day all the time. Remove the huge invasive burning bushes, and they give the name of it. Developing a pollinator garden, I'm not even going to try stepping stones, will soon be added to allow visitors to walk through the pollinator garden, to observe flowering plants and pollinators, and they work with the Mount Airy Gardening Club. So you really need to look, because anywhere you look in town where you see anything that's flowers, that looks nice, the entrances to our parks, it's all the Beautification Commission. If you see them, honk, wave, because they're out there, I've seen them at seven in the morning. The next meeting will be July nineteenth here in Town Hall, and that's it for beautification. Streets and Roads, no meeting in June because we meet every other month, so the next meeting is July twenty-sixth, I wanted to let Councilwoman Demoter know, because we have staff on, we get our staff update from Officer Brooks, but we'd like to get an update then and notify those members about the upcoming meeting we have with the DOT, and any update from Main Street Task Force. We will be virtual, we are looking to go back into Town Hall in September, we've talked to the mayor, and we're hoping, the thing holding Streets and Roads up is coming back here in Town Hall, is we want to have that virtual capability for people that can't necessarily get here for our meeting, there's a lot going on that we want to make sure residents are up to date on, so we're hoping we could get a staff member, maybe someone that lives nearby that might be able to come back and do that for us, but, you know, we're just toying with any staff members we could think of, so we are virtual for July, like I said, we're looking to go back in September, and we always need Barney's expertise, that's why we're thinking of Barney, but we'll be happy to take, we, we just don't like the idea that they work all day and then they're going to have to come back here, all I need you- All I need you to do is go Facebook Live. I'd even be happy if you brought the drone in here. And by the way, that drone footage, I got to say, 4th of July, I think that was staff, right? The beautiful drone pictures people are seeing from the fireworks. So someone on his birthday was hidden somewhere with his little remote control. Thank you for that. Traffic circle, I get a lot of questions on that. Things are moving along. There's a lot of moving parts. We have different deadlines on funding, on permitting, et cetera, property acquisition. But I think people only want to know the key one, shovel in the ground. I'm hoping April 2023, get that shovel in the ground and get it going and get it done so we can alleviate the safety issues we have over in that area. I have to say thank you to, I believe it was the State Highway Administration for restriping some of our crosswalks along Main Street and at Prospect in Maine. And I noticed the roads a little torn up down at Prospect in Maine. Be patient, that's all part of a greater improvement process. So just be patient with that. It's only going to get better. One thing Streets and Roads did is we got a street map. We've talked to staff, and we're going to get it up on the town website under Streets and Roads. It'll show you the town boundaries. So it's very clear if somebody wants to know why are the police not policing this area? Why can't we do traffic studies or any kind of traffic calming measures in this area? It'll be very clear what the town boundaries are, and that's just to give residents another way to look at it and see. And lastly, MML, it's always good to meet with other municipalities, tap into their ideas and suggestions. And as you all know, there's been a little contention at this table, so I have to say thank you to the mayor for his team building putt-putt down at MML. It got people to bond, and as you can see, starting to work out some things and work for the better of the town. So I have to say thank you to the mayor and everybody else for doing that. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next up is Water and Sewer Commission and Mount Airy Sustainability Commission, and that is me. Water Sewer Commission continues not to meet until August, so our next meeting will be August 3, 7:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. And I had to miss the last Sustainability Commission due to work, my work schedule. And that next meeting is August 17 at 7:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. But most of that work has been with Bee City, as well as the Garden has taken up a lot of our time. So, Town Attorney Report, Tom?
Since our last meeting, I did attend the Planning Commission meeting and also worked on a couple of Maryland Public Information Act responses. So that's basically it.
Thank you. Go.
All right, thank you, Council President Poyer. I just wanted to say one other thing. It was implied tonight by joint citizen comments that the town administrator may have directed town staff to do something or said something. That is the farthest thing. While he does make day-to-day decisions, which is fine, we all agree that that's important. What he was, we as a council make the decisions related to development and how things move forward. The town administrator offers wonderful advice and things of that, so please do not take things out of context when you receive PIA documents and things of that nature, because all staff operates at a wonderful level, and do not take the initiative to overstep their bounds in any area here. That goes with the town attorney also. What they provide us is advice, and we make the decisions. Thank you.
Can I just add to that? Thank you, Councilwoman Mundar. I caught, and I'm glad you reminded me in the public comment, someone talked about the PIA documents as minutes to meetings. There were no minutes to those meetings, our minutes, and in any, our commissions, our minutes are voted on and passed by our commissions, our task force, the council. If there were town meetings, what you're getting an eye on were someone's personal notes that have not been vetted. It was a staff member's notes. Those are not minutes. Someone in the public comment did say minutes again, and we don't usually talk when you're doing public comment to let you talk freely, but thank you for reminding me. Those were not minutes to those, any of those meetings. They were someone's notes that were not looked at by everybody else at the meeting and corrected and agreed on and voted on. So those are not official minutes. They are just a staff member's notes, and I just want to clear that up. Thank you, Councilwoman Mundar, for reminding me.
All right, thank you. And I apologize, I missed the team building putt-putt. School was still in session for me.
Don't worry, it was hot.
At that time.
Just about the most humid night of the week.
It was hot and humid in the course, but it was fun.
I heard the girls won.
Uh, debatable. Scoring issues with that, I believe.
Shocking. Issues, shocking during a team building.
I think John Breeding pretty well schooled us.
Yes.
All right. You guys received your town administrator report. We also received the code enforcement report via email. I did not see anything as far as zoning, but I'm sure we'll get an update when John returns. We do have three closed meetings, the first of which is to consult council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, subject is the Flatiron Building. The second is to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, subject the Beck Property. And the third is to consult council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, subject is the small business loan. At the end of the closed meetings, the council will adjourn. Councilmember Demoter?
Aye.
Councilmember Mundar?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Councilwoman Galetti?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Reed?
Aye.
Thank you. So I will close this meeting, and we will see everyone shortly. Thank you.